Seven o'clock.
What time do you have?
TV's ready.
What time do you have?
He says it's ready.
Okay.
I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Newport Beach City Council. And Tim, we have a roll call, please.
The record will show that all members are present.
Thank you. Would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Sledge? Please follow me.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Tonight is our special meeting that, or I guess it's a, is this a continued meeting or a special meeting? A special meeting to go through and interview those that have applied for the position of city council member for District Number Seven that was vacated by John Heffernan. City Clerk, would you please go through the procedure of how this is going to work tonight so that we all are working off the same page?
Absolutely. Each interview will be approximately 25 minutes, each candidate being offered a five-minute introduction and a two-minute closing statement. For the candidates, when they get up there, if they're not familiar with being at the podium, when the yellow light comes on on the little box on the podium, that will indicate that you have a minute left. The candidates will be randomly selected, we'll draw their names from Don Webb's hat. After we go through these parameters, the candidates will be kept together in the council conference room and will be called into the chambers for their individual interviews. Once your interview is completed, you'll return to the conference room. And then after, after the last candidate has been interviewed, all the candidates will be asked back into the chambers. Each council member will be allowed to ask each candidate questions deemed pertinent to the selection process. The public will be allowed to comment on the candidates and the selection at the conclusion of all of the interviews. Discussion of the candidates will take place after the last interview has been conducted and the selection of the District Seven council member will follow the discussion. After the council has voted, we will swear in the new council member.
Thank you very much. First off, I'd just like to thank all five candidates that have applied. I've read through all of the applications and really appreciate that each one of you has experiences with the city that will be valuable for the city. And we can't select five of you, so we're just gonna have to try to figure out how to pick one of the five. And I think that through the interview process that has been used in the past, that each one of the council members will be able to ask questions. And hopefully, at the end of that, we will be able to reach consensus on who we would like to select as the new council member. Does any other council member wish to say anything before we start?
I'd just make one comment. We're acting under authority of Charter Number 403 that basically says we have 30 days under which council shall appoint a new council member to the district. So it is with that authority that we are acting tonight.
Any other council members wish to say anything?
Only to add that the new council member, should he be chosen tonight, will serve until November election when the seat will be open. And certainly, any of the candidates here that are not successful tonight, I encourage you to put your name in at that time. Thank you.
Okay. City Clerk, shall we have the drawing?
First candidate to be interviewed is Nancy Jones.
Nancy Jones. Okay. Now, the other candidates, who's gonna escort them to the room in the back? Okay. Robin? Can you show them to the room in the back just so that they know where to go?
Make sure the TV's on.
Nancy, welcome to the podium.
Thank you very much. Let me put a pro-lizenz because I'm coming off that California flu thing.
I think.
I'm coughing.
Do you have an extra one there? I think I have the same thing.
Okay. Okay. You'll start off with, you have five minutes to start with.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Webb and council members. My name is Nancy Jones. I live at 49 Claremont, Newport Coast. When I learned of Mr. Heffernan's resignation, my first thought was that it would be good to have a representative from Newport Coast on the city council. Upon reflecting who, I decided to apply. My husband and I moved our family to Newport Beach in 1965. I have been fortunate to be able to volunteer in our community most of those years. While the children were growing up, I participated in the schools and Girl Scouts. When the last one graduated from Corona Del Mar High School, I joined the Friends of the Library where I served on the board for five years. The Central Library was in the planning stages then, and I applied to the Board of Library Trustees to advocate for a bookstore in the new building. During that time, I learned a little about how the workings of our city government. Excuse me. In 1995, at the end of my first term, my husband and I moved to Newport Coast. And in a short, two-and-a-half mile move, I became disqualified to serve a second term. It was a bit devastating. But now, I'm a part of Newport Beach, and I would like to contribute once again. This past year, I have enjoyed being the vice chair of the Heritage Committee, helping in the celebration of our centennial. Several times, I've heard people refer to us as those people in Newport Coast. That doesn't feel very good. We contribute financially to the city, and some contribute time and talents. One of my hopes is to help integrate more of the newly annexed people into participating in the whole city. These past four weeks have been really a great experience. I appreciate the time that each of you has spent talking with me. You, thank you. You all care about the city, and you care about what's best for the city. And you've made it very clear the amount of time that is required to sit on the council. The staff has been very cooperative. Those with whom I have worked are competent and dedicated. I would look forward to the challenge of running for election in November. But I must be forthright in telling you that if appointed, I will miss the meetings of February 29th and March 14th. I will be visiting a good friend in Wales who is terminally ill with ALS. Her doctor estimates she has only four months to live, and I want to spend one more time with her. Needless to say, these plans were made before I was aware of the opportunity to serve on, for city council.
Okay.
Is it compulsory to be five minutes?
No, it does not. It's actually a plus not to be.
I think it's gonna be a long meeting.
We have been known to take that in consideration. All right. City council members, let's start with Mr. Rosansky.
Thank you. Hi, Nancy. Can you just give me a short little description of what you think the duties of a city council member are?
I think the first thing is, one must have a clear understanding of the issues. Then, you should be able to articulate them to anyone, whether they be residents, business people, regional, state, or federal representatives. Then you must have time for dialogue. At that point, when you've heard everything you can possibly hear, then it's time to get down to business and make a decision.
Who would like to go next? Mr. Sledge?
Hi, Nancy.
Hi, Ed. Mr. Sledge?
If you were selected to the position on the city council, what would your number-one goal be, and how would you go about tackling that?
Well, I think for this year, the main foreseeable goal is the city hall complex. The general plan amendment is about to wind down. I would not pretend to take that apart. A lot of good people have worked on that for a long time, except however, for the historical element. The Heritage Committee is planning actually Thursday afternoon in our meeting to, you know, kind of define what it is that we're hoping the general plan amendment will have. But I think the city hall complex does need to move quickly. Construction costs are rising. I think a lot of work has been put into this already. I commend you all for bringing more of the public in and, you know, working on sites and where it should be and so forth. But for this year, I think those are two pretty important elements. A lot of the other elements are ongoing.
Mr. Nichols, would you like to go next?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Nancy, I wondered what your concepts of libraries are. Do you favor dissemination of more of them? I mean, the local libraries like Corona Del Mar, and we have one over in, that we just build off of Irvine?
It's about to open.
Yeah? That, what is your impression there, and how would you look to integrate those with schools or that kind of thing?
Well, I think that's-
Or would you integrate them with schools?
I think that's gonna be interesting, to see how it all comes together. I would hope that it would be a very positive, you know, concept. Enough people seem to believe that it will work, so they have gotten, moved on with that. The thing about libraries in Newport Beach is because of our geography with the harbor and the water and so forth, it really is helpful to the citizens to have several branches. We looked at this long and hard when we were planning on the Central Library. And it just seemed as though it was difficult to eliminate some of the branches and still provide good service. Corona Del Mar, I know, has been a concern for many people. It serves a lot of people in that Corona Del Mar area. I know it doesn't have the circulation that it used to have, but of course, the Central Library is close by. And I know some of the people in District Seven really were hoping to have a library as part of the community center up there, and were a little disappointed when they heard that wasn't gonna happen. But my understanding was it was to only be 5,000 square feet, and that is a very small amount of space for a library. Plus the fact staffing becomes a bit of a problem, because when you have a library, you must have a librarian there at least some of the time. And with the close proximity to the Central Library, I really don't have a problem that, at the moment, that library is not going to go in. The children's library at the Central Library is excellent, and I think it would be mostly children that would want to use the library up there. And most of us up there have cars, and we're running up and down the hill frequently anyway.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggle?
Yes. Hi, Nancy. My question deals with representing people, 80,000 citizens, and the time commitment involved with that. I know I was in a 12-story office tower last week in Los Angeles, and I was talking on my cellphone, and I rounded the corner to try to get a little privacy, and there was Councilman Ridgway talking on his cellphone. We both serve on different committees at SCAG, but it's really trying to juggle, you know, city council with life, with work activities. And each week, you know, we get the equivalent of two phone books of information that we need to read through. Last week, for example, I had a meeting with staff on the harbor, very complex economic, regulatory, environmental management, and policy issues. We have constituents that call us with pressing issues. We have an annexation that's about to possibly be initiated. We have citizens with wonderful projects that they're working on, the Back Bay Science Center, for example. And all of this takes time. And when I first interviewed, I didn't, I wasn't aware of how much time that it took. And my questions to you are, do you believe in representative government? Do you understand what it means to represent people? And what is your concept of representing people? And do you have the time to take on a public service?
I do have the time. I think it's very important to listen and try and represent the city as a whole, and try and make the best decision for the city. I realize that some of the difficulties will be, when you finally get down to that point where you need to vote, that you will be disagreeing with some of the people. But I think it's really important to try and have a vision of what, you know, we all would think as what is the best thing for Newport Beach. You have all really, well, and also, just as an aside, if we can quit having this appointment process, think how much time it would save for people. I really appreciate the time that you've given to me, and I assume it was five times that, and that's just added to everything else that you've had to do.
So, but you do believe in representative government?
Well, yes. Yeah.
Mr. Ridgway?
Yeah. Hi, Nancy. You know, being last, a couple of my questions have already been asked, so now I have to sit here and struggle with a new question. I didn't really come prepared, but-
I find that hard to believe.
That's true. I try to be a little bit spontaneous at times. But let me ask you, while this sounds simple, it's complex. And I'm gonna go to the issue of quality of life in Newport Beach globally. We know we have traffic problems.
We have.
We have deteriorating infrastructure. We have a bay that is begging for management. And we have some areas that are in need of renewal. Talk to me about your concept of balancing the quality of life in this community. What does quality of life mean to you? And knowing the issues that are before us, traffic is not only limited to Newport, it's endemic in Southern California, by the way, as long as people keep having babies. That's just the way it's gonna go. But talk to me about your definition of quality of life and how you would balance that in Newport Beach. What's your vision?
I would like to continue to have Newport Beach be the kind of place where we love to live. My grandparents came here in 1921. It was a very different little beach community at that point, and they loved living here. My father came here in 1933 and met my mother, and he actually opened a mortuary there at 15th and Balboa. And in 1933, he couldn't, there was not enough business so that they could stay in this town. But mother finally got him back to Newport Beach when they moved into the terraces in behind Oasis. And I've been able to live here since 1965, and I've traveled the United States a little. And this is really a special place. And I want, I want to help keep it that way for my children, my grandchildren, and anyone who comes in the future. It's, it's about people with different ideas and having the ability to discuss them. It's that feeling, I think, we all have, that, you know, who live here and love it. And had, I wish I had had this question a little earlier, and I could've put it into thought. Better. Verbalize it better.
I'm not gonna let you off the hook.
All right.
You've kind of given me a touchy-holdy-feely comment about Newport Beach.
Well, that's the way I feel about it.
I, we all do. That's why we're here. But let's talk about quality of life. Define that for me in Newport Beach. Is it our, you know, our restaurants? Is it our, you know-
Restaurants.
Our villages? Is it Corona Del Mar? Is, you know, what-
It's the variety, the diversity, and of course, the harbor. I mean, that is, you know, a fairly unique thing that the city has that most don't. It's the air, the water, the casual, the feeling that you can relax and always be on vacation even though you're working hard. You can work hard all day and go take a walk on the beach and relax. And, and the beaches are kept clean because we think that's important. Traffic, wherever you go is traffic. It's not just here.
On the Community Center for Newport Coast, there's been some controversy going back and forth. Do you really need it? No, no, we don't want it, or yes, it'd be a really good idea. What are some of your thoughts on the Community Center and how we might better handle that program?
Well, there is a group up there who is, of course, against it because they fear that it will interfere with their viewpoint. I think that, I think if we sell the idea, it'll get used. It seems to me that a lot of the people that have children in the elementary school have that as kind of a gathering place and meeting place. I think it would need to be policed in a way, because already, that park attracts a lot of people from out of the area. And I don't know what the Community Center would do. But as far as I know, it's a done deal. I understand there's a bit of a budget concern, because it looks like the numbers are coming in a little higher than anticipated. And that is something that would have to be addressed and figure out how we're gonna handle it.
You've been on, on the Heritage Committee, and we're in our centennial year this year. And what are some of your thoughts on, on how the community should look at our arts and culture and heritage?
Can we get back to you after our four o'clock meeting on Thursday? And that isn't an area we are going to address. As far as the heritage with the general plan is concerned, as far as the centennial's concerned, I think our opening party was fantastic. I mean, it was well-attended, and I know the city spent a lot of money on that, getting the facility ready and so forth. The Heritage Committee is working on some oral histories and some, getting some historical plaques placed. And of course, then there's the issue of the book. And we'll get that taken care of eventually.
Good. I think I'd like the council to ask one more question around if they could. Councilmember Rosansky?
Yes, I would. Nancy, are you familiar with the two initiatives that have been circulating around town for the Green Light Two Initiative and the COP Initiative?
I am aware of them, but I have not read them carefully, and I have not spoken with anyone who is behind that, and if appointed, would do that.
Okay. So, my follow-up question was, please comment on what your thoughts were on those two initiatives, but-
The little I know about them, it sounds to me like it might slow down due process a bit, but I really would hate to comment until I had more information about it.
Thank you. Mr. Sledge?
Outside of the Newport Coast Community Center, what other things are going on in your district that, or the district that you would be representing that you think are important or people would have concerns about?
Well, it's fairly quiet up there. I would like to eventually see something happen with the Coyote Canyon landfill, have that turn into a usable space instead of just sitting there. It's great for me. I look out my window and see it, and when the lupin, sorry, when the lupin are in bloom, it's quite lovely. But I think that's something that should be considered, because I think it's an area that possibly could be turned into recreational space. And at that point, I, I would feel more comfortable with a Community Center there if we, you know, would go ahead and have that other area. Because with a Community Center, we're gonna lose some of that park. And even though organized events don't happen there all that frequently, a lot of just walking and being and hanging out goes on in that park. And if we could extend the area where we could have some outdoor space, I think that'd be terrific. Now, I have my own little personal issue up there. You don't care? Okay.
Councilmember Nichols?
I didn't understand your personal little issue. I have a question. We were-
Well, I didn't tell you my personal.
Well, that's true, probably. We talked an awful long time, though. So, I, I mean, I did too much talking, I think, at that time. The, my question is, is we're talking about some pretty big growth, and that will entail upzoning of properties, which means that you're basically giving a higher zoning to a property. How do you think that should be done? Is there, is it just wherever we want it, we just upzone the properties? Or there, I mean, that's, that's essentially a gift of dollars to that owner, because he's now able to build on his property much more than he did before. Is that something that we should look at on how that's done? Or is that, how would you, what's your view on that?
Well, I think there should be a plan in place, and I would, of course, have to defer to staff to, you know, have a good understanding of the parameters and what we should consider along that line.
We have about two minutes left, so, Councilmember Diggle?
Sure. I believe that those that came before me did a marvelous job representing citizens. And one of the assets of our community is we have a library system that's ranked amongst the best in the state. Can you speak to how our library system got to be so good?
Because a lot of people here in this town worked hard to get it that way. We've had good librarians, and we've had great response from the community. I was active when that library was, the Central Library was planned and so forth. And I felt, as well as many others, that it was one of the greatest assets that we could bring to this community. We have a high reader level, fairly high socioeconomic group, well-educated community, and I think it's something that the citizens deserve, and I'm really happy they have. And they really get behind it and support it.
Mr. Ridgway?
Nancy, do you have any comments you'd like to make about environmental concerns in this city? That is, the Back Bay, water quality, both ocean and Back Bay water quality. I mean, do you have any comments or?
Well, it's something that's been going on for decades, of course, ever since we became a city, and something that will continue to be looked at over the years. And I know there are dredging issues, and there are funding issues, and they ebb and flow over the course of decades. And I think we do need to be very active and on top of seeing to it that that bay is protected as best we can, because it isn't just for us. It's also for the people who are dropping stuff into it way up inland, and what, again, what we can do to get them to help.
How much time do you have? Fifteen seconds.
Fifteen seconds.
Okay. You have, is it three minutes to, two minutes to close?
How about 45 seconds?
Whatever.
It would be an honor to work with all of you individually and collectively. I only wish that the city had the same experience I have had in talking with you all and had a better understanding of how really dedicated you are. Our staff is awesome and to be admired. I would happily spend time with them. But the greatest reward would be interacting with all the people of Newport Beach, continually working for the future of the city we love.
Thank you very much. Just a second.
Oh, I have, I have to, I can't sit here for the rest of the evening.
Just hold on. We gotta draw them one more name, and you gotta tell the person who comes next.
The person who has already spoken, shouldn't they be, I mean, they're, I can't speak again, so why can't I sit here?
No, no. The way it works out, we don't want you to intimidate the other people, but hold on for just a minute.
Excellent. The next applicant is Keith Curry.
Would you please ask?
Would I go fetch him? Is he in this room here, and I go over?
Robin, Robin will show you. Robin, Robin will show you. Thank you, Robin. Welcome to the podium, Mr. Curry. The way it works is, just for you refresh you, it's a five-minute start. You can use all of it or a part of it. Then we'll have about twenty, twenty-five minutes. And then a two-minute closing. Is that correct, City Clerk?
Twenty-five minutes total.
Twenty-five minutes total.
Which includes the five minutes introduction and the two-minute closing.
Okay. She's the boss tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's an honor to stand before you tonight and be considered as a candidate for the city council. I'm also honored to be among a group of sincere and dedicated people seeking your support tonight. And I'm proud to be in their company. Over the course of the past two weeks, I've had the opportunity to visit with all of you, to talk with past members of this council, city staff, and community leaders. I've learned a lot about our city from each of you. And I've grown in my respect for the dedication and time each of you devotes to our community. By now, most of you know my background. My education is in public administration and government. I've worked at several levels of government. And for nearly nineteen years as a partner at Public Financial Management, I have helped grow our firm from sixty-four people to the largest and highest-ranked public finance advisory and consulting firm in the nation with over three hundred and sixty people coast to coast. I've been a financial advisor to governments large and small across America. It's been my privilege to work on projects that transform cities, such as the five billion dollar Denver Light Rail Program and the five hundred million dollar infrastructure improvements required for the Disney theme park in Anaheim. But I've also worked on smaller projects, such as funding sports parks in Brea or clean water projects in Oceanside. I have learned something from all of these assignments. And I am ready to put that knowledge to work for the city. In my career as a financial advisor, I've been privileged to help elected officials solve problems and deliver government services better. It is this perspective, that of a problem solver, that I want to bring to the council. In reviewing the city's financial statements, I take note of the efforts of this council to sit aside reserves in the face of rising pension costs and to reach a successful agreement with our employees to cap post-employment benefit cost exposure. This is a substantial accomplishment for which you should be proud and our residents grateful. I pledge to continue in this tradition of fiscal responsibility. The general plan update is the biggest issue before our city this year. And I have been impressed by the efforts of the council and GPAC to reach out to the community and reflect the diverse points of view in our city on this important issue. The general plan will guide our community. And as we prepare to send this issue to the electorate, I look forward to listening with an open mind to the many perspectives on how this update should best be accomplished before reaching final opinions. I applaud the city for forming the Facilities Financing Committee. And as we look at the city hall, I believe it is important that we have a vision of all of the public improvement needs over the foreseeable future, including, for example, the Oasis Senior Center. I'm hopeful the process will produce a roadmap that identifies the most cost-effective funding strategies and gives residents confidence that we can meet our capital program responsibilities. In discussions with residents of the Newport Coast, I know there's concern about the ability of the city to complete the Newport Coast Community Center and how additional costs may be funded. I will work to identify funding sources that are fair and equitable in light of the annexation agreement. For example, in conjunction with the county, we should explore the use of debt service reserve funds related to the existing CFD bonds. By substituting a reserve fund surety policy from a bond insurance provider, we may be able to release an amount of funds from the reserve sufficient to meet the funding needs of the project. This idea needs to be researched with the county, bond council, and residents. I also pledge to work with the residents to ally any sense of isolation from the rest of the city and to encourage their full participation in civic affairs. The proposed Measure M reauthorization will generate more than eleven billion dollars in transportation funds. I've worked specifically with many of the self-help counties in California. And I know the techniques that can be applied to expedite projects prior to the 2011 start of the tax extension. Widening the Jamboree Bridge at State Route seventy-three and completion of our traffic synchronization program are all projects that can be advanced and completed early. These are achievable goals if we are effective in our advocacy with the OCTA. In addition, we need greater flexibility so that local return funds can be used more effectively. Now is the time to make our case. And I welcome the opportunity to join the city team in time for this effort. I will focus on emergency preparedness and use my experience in Washington to help ensure Newport Beach is competitive for available homeland security funding. And finally, our ability to sustain a high quality of life, preserve and protect the environmental charms of our beaches, harbor, and bay. The ability to maintain first-class police and fire services are all derived from a strong, underlying local economy and healthy business climate. I pledge to keep Newport strong and vibrant. I'm humbled and gratified by your consideration. Should you select me tonight, I pledge to work with all council members in a spirit of positive collegiality. To the residents of Newport Beach and particularly my neighbors in District Seven, I pledge to work with all my strength to provide effective representation, to listen to all sides, to be fair, and to remember that all power derives from the people. Thank you for the opportunity to share these thoughts tonight.
Thank you. We will now, the council will go through one to two rounds of questions. And Mr. Rosansky, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you. Hi, Keith. Could you please explain to me what your idea is of the duties of a city councilman?
Duties of a city councilman are to establish policies for the city. They are to lead in a spirit of consensus building, a spirit of policy direction, to obtain and empower the best staff that we can find so that those decisions are fulfilled fully and faithfully. It's to work with the community, to be the, to listen to the community, sometimes to interact with the community and help educate the community as part of a leadership. In short, I think it's the job of a leader is to lead. And I think that's the part of the council and our governing board.
Thank you. Mr. Sellig?
Evening, Keith.
Good evening.
I was intrigued in your, in your application and also in your presentation, like describing yourself as a, as a problem solver. How would you apply those skills being a member of this body?
Well, what I've learned often is that at the crux of the issue, everybody oftentimes wants the same objective. They just want it a little bit differently. Or oftentimes, it's identifying a funding source. For example, as I try to do with the Community Center in terms of identifying the money issue that may make some of the other issues solvable and resolvable. So, I would, I would focus on the issue that way. In my professional life, people hire us to come in, to look at problems objectively, dispassionately, to talk to all the parties concerned, to bring folks together, and craft a solution that works both politically, economically, and fiscally.
Mr. Nichols?
Thank you. We have, our general plan involves more additional residences. A lot of it is under the low-income categories. And my question is, is what do you, have you had any experience in that and what the implications of that are for communities and how to handle that?
Well, as you know, most of those requirements are driven by state legislative requirements as part of the housing element of the general plan. I was, I was here to sit through the discussion that you all had the other day on the housing element of the general plan. Oftentimes, and more frequently, communities, particularly high-income communities such as ours, are looking to things such as senior housing to resolve that issue. And I think that's a very appropriate use in our community. We also need to be careful about conservation in terms of housing. It's a difficult challenge in a community like Newport Beach where the property values are so inherently high to provide affordable housing. But certainly, in light of meeting our statutory requirements, I think this council has done an excellent job. For example, if you look around at some of the senior housing that's been developed in the community.
Thank you. Councilmember Diggle?
Yes, my question has to do with representative government representing eighty thousand citizens. And I remember when I was interviewing, I was sitting in then-councilman Steve Bromberg's office. And above him was a picture of Arnold Schwarzenegger. And he asked me if I had the time to be on city council. And the first thing I said is, I really like your picture. And, yeah, I think I do have time for this. But the demands on elective office, and I've been in government on a staff and representing applicants, the demands in public office are really substantial. Long-range policy issues, we have our general plan coming up. Also, constituents call with pressing issues. I remember getting a call from a PTA mom for crosswalk guard. And within twenty-four hours, it had turned into people wanting to have a petition and a reporter calling me. So, these things can escalate very quickly. So, my question to you is, you know, how do you see yourself representing citizens? First of all, do you believe in representative government? And what about the time demands of this position?
Well, I, that's an excellent question. I certainly do believe in representative government. I've had an opportunity in my previous professional life working in a staff position to handle constituent issues, both at the city and county level and even in Washington with people who are looking for just, you know, bigger checks, but the same kind of constituent issues. And I understand the time demand. And I, let me tell you, I'm very impressed by the commitment that all of you have put into this office. And it's, it's been something that I've thought about as I've pushed forward and applied here to make sure that I really, in fact, wanted to make that commitment. And in fact, I do. I've shared with many of you that I'm at a stage in my professional life where very shortly I'll be able to sort of, you know, wind that up and have more full-time, frankly, to be, to be involved in this job. And I look forward to doing that. I represent, I understand and respect very much the challenges of representing eighty thousand people. My wife and I were out on Sunday, driving around to a lot of the various issue points, you know, the park in Newport Coast and Marina Park and, and some of the other places, just the senior center, checking things out and doing a little walk-around. And I recognize that if you're going to do the job right, you need to put the time into it to do it right.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Well, Keith, we sat down and talked. And let me say, you're very impressive tonight. But I'm going to challenge you with something that I was challenged with when I ran for elective office. And that was, I came from a criminal defense background. And I was a cross-examiner of people. And a couple of people came up to me and said, "Don't take that to council. Don't cross-examine. Take away that part of your life." And that wasn't always easy. And I did that, I had some experience on the planning commission. You're a very good businessman. And that is obvious without parallel. However, you say you're a problem solver. And again, I sense it's in a business environment. But this council and anybody elected and/or appointed deals with homeowner associations and people. From dogs on a leash, I had that call today, okay?
That was my email.
Well, it was, but I also had it, you know? It never fails. How are you in dealing with people, just one-on-one with people, not in a business environment? But remember, these are citizens. And you're a citizen. You're not a businessman. I want you to take that business hat off. That's my challenge to you. And I want you to be a problem solver on, you know, running water out of a rose garden from a next-door neighbor or broken sidewalk in front of somebody's house. Or my call today, a drunk sleeping on a bench, you know? And, and that person has been there on and off for three months. So, now you've got to go down and you've got to visit with three or four or five people. How are you going to do that, Keith?
Well, that's a good question. You know, while I've been a businessperson, the context of my business has always been in government. And I was in government for several years before I went into this business. You deal with it by, number one, listening to everybody and, you know, treat people as people. A lot of the frustration that people feel when they have a problem with government is that they don't understand how to use government, how to find the right guy within the government to take their call, who can solve their problem. And so, the first thing I want to be is the guy, when that problem comes in, who knows how to get it solved through the city, who knows the people in the city administration who can fix that problem. I did that for two years in Los Angeles County on behalf of constituents in the eastern part of the county. So, I understand how to find the right guy in the government who can make that problem go away. I also understand it comes from being empathetic. Many of the problems that you just were describing we're experiencing as I speak with our homeowners association. So, I'm very sensitive and empathetic to those types of issues and am experiencing them myself, frankly. And hopefully, I'm experiencing the same activism and getting them resolved. But we'll see about that. But that's how I would handle it.
Well, let me suggest there are some issues that can't be resolved. Period. Let's take a halfway house where guys are smoking and drink, or smoking and cussing. You going to solve that?
Well...
And that's been my challenge on the peninsula. And I stand there and I watch and I listen. It can't be solved.
Well, I'm not going to say I can solve every problem.
Okay.
But I'm going to listen to everybody.
Okay.
How's that?
I just, I want to get you down to a human scale here.
Fair enough.
Okay.
Point well taken.
I consider you human already, so...
Thank you. I could figure out how to finance it, though, if that's what you want.
No, 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 I don't want to do that.
I'm convinced of that. One of the issues that is, is out there in District Seven is the Community Center. And you've mentioned it briefly. Are there any suggestions that you feel that you could implement related to helping the city and the community associations go forward and make this work?
Sure. You know, the issue there, first of all, with the Community Center and its funding shortfall, that's why I suggested looking to the CFD bonds that were originally sold. We were able to pull up the official statements on a couple of them. There are some reserve funds there. We need to really delve back into the depths of the bond documents to see if the authority to replace it with a surety exists and whether bond council would concur and whether this would be an eligible expense. Those are the questions that have to be answered. But that's one way, for example, of getting the money without the city having come out of pocket directly for the money. That cost then becomes really pushed out to 2033 in terms of any measurable effect on anybody. And I think it's a good way to resolve an eight-hundred-thousand-dollar problem if that's ultimately a problem. The bigger case, the bigger issue up there, though, is, is that there's some community alienation. There's not a clear view as to the, either the need or the structure of what's going to be in the Community Center. There needs to be more dialogue with the community. The leadership, I think, needs to be clarified up there in terms of exactly who is, who is in charge and who is speaking for the residents. The issue of, I know the issue is of a concern to many of you, sort of the sort of called private aspect of the park and those issues. As we were up there this weekend, it's certainly not difficult to get up and walk around. As I understand it, the park is, for the most part, made available to many of the community groups, teams, little leagues. And I just heard a twenty-minute speech, by the way, on this in the back room, who might, who might otherwise, the city might otherwise make them available to. So, I think a lot of this is maybe form over substance. But clearly, one of the first jobs for whoever takes the job as seventh district councilman is to sit down with those issues and, and get some dialogue going with the community, move this project forward, identify the missing funding piece, and get it going.
Thank you. Mr. Rosansky?
Keith, there are two initiatives that are circulating around town now trying to get signatures to qualify for the ballot, the Green Light Two and the COP Financing Initiative. If you're aware of those two initiatives, could you please give us your thoughts on those?
I reviewed the language in Green Light Two. The concern I would have with that is, you know, its provisions may, in fact, and, you know, there are those of you who are lawyers on the DS, so I won't pretend to practice law, could be interpreted to constitutive taking under the constitutional taking provision. And, you know, if it goes forward and it passes, I'm sure that issue will be adjudicated in the courts and ultimately, we'll have a decision on that part, on that part. But that would certainly be a concern with me with the, with the so-called Green Light Two initiative. And that certainly violates the Constitution. I do not support putting COP financings to the voters. COPs are the debt vehicle of choice for California jurisdictions for the last thirty years, up and down the state. They are indistinguishable from bonds from the investment, from investors' perspectives. All of them are now insured. They carry the same AAA ratings. Let me point out that when New York City had nine eleven, the tool that they asked for and that Congress gave them was capital, was expanded capital markets access through Liberty Bonds. When Katrina hit the Gulf Coast, the tool that they asked for and Congress gave them was expanded capital markets access through what are called GO bonds or Gulf Opportunity Bonds. If we have a natural disaster here, tsunami, an earthquake, hillside collapse, and we have to wait to go to the voters before we can access the city's credit, we could be in a real dilemma. And I would not support that. I think that's, people can have an opinion, pro or con, on the capital facility that they want, may or may not want to build. But to use COPs as a red herring to oppose that is, in my mind, disingenuous.
Thank you. Mr. Sellig?
You talk about going after Measure M funding our fair share in your talk. What, what types of things do you think that we should be doing or would be doing to go after and get our fair share of those things outside of, you know, the typical process of submitting your application and going through the routine process?
Well, as you know, this is the great time for this because the, the draft proposal is being circulated now. The OCTA is attempting to draft, to generate a consensus on this throughout the county. They need a two-thirds vote by the electorate to pass it. And that obviously means it's going to run very strongly in Newport Beach. The political calculus is, is that because of the nature of where we are and the fact that we have relatively few freeways that come through our community, and we're going to get, on a per capita basis, probably less out of that measure than a lot of other places in the county are going to be. So now is the time for us, as a city, to negotiate the things that we want out of that measure. And let me give you a couple of examples. Our traffic synchronization program, that can be advanced. I'm working in Sacramento, San Diego and Phoenix to advance measure money that's been approved but won't kick in for several years. We can get that done quickly. We can get the widening done on, on Jamboree at the 73. That measure includes $170 million for environmental cleanup for runoff. And that's the issue that we face relative to our water quality, both in Bub Gully and in the, the Back Bay. We can access those funds to help us remediate that issue, which we're now coming out of pocket for, to do. There's also funds in the measure for local circulator services. We get very little transit service here, or we need very little transit service in Newport Beach. Less than 2% of the trips are carried on transit. Most of those are people who live outside of the community. What we ought to have is a beach shuttle that gets kids to the beach and moves them up and down the beach so that they can go to the fun zone without having to take a car and move a car and park a car. And we need to have adaptable, small, community-based transportation service out of the measure that really meets the needs in Newport Beach. That should be our objective.
Mr. Nichols?
We're having a, sort of a untalked about abrasion with Irvine, particularly along Jamboree, where they're putting in dramatic amount of housing and so forth. It has the capability of sopping up a good portion of our traffic, street traffic. What would your thoughts be there? That's a, we're right next to an airport. We've got a 60 dB zone. We're looking at possibly putting in housing there. Should we try and match them? Or, I mean, what is your, how would you go about trying to determine a solution there that would be beneficial or more beneficial to us?
Well, I certainly would not support trying to match them in terms of the density and the types of, of development that they've put up along Jamboree. I think they pretty well soaked up a lot of capacity there for a long time. I think there very well may be some isolated spots within the airport area. If you think, I think they're actually in Irvine, but if you think about where the metropolitan condos are, I mean, that's not far from the airport. A smaller development, it needs to be very well designed because of the noise issues there to work, but it needs to be site-specific and discreet. Certainly not anything like Irvine's done.
Ms. Webber-Dagel?
Yes, on our February 14th agenda, we're going to be having an item on Irvine and how you can construct 20,000 units on a 1988 traffic study. So we will be looking at that. My question to you is, our community is surrounded on two sides by water, really part of our quality of life. Any thoughts on water quality and the management of the harbor on that particular resource?
Right, well, as I say, one of the things we ought to explore is how we can use some of the money being set aside, $300 million total, $170 million specifically for water quality cleanup from drainage, to supplement the efforts that the city is already undertaking to meet its water quality standards and requirements. That's number one. Number two, it's how we look at the uses in the harbor and how we, how we manage those. I thought the council had a extensive discussion the other night relative to the Seabass Hatchery in terms of the impact that it had. And I was impressed by the amount of analysis that went into looking at that issue relative to, to its contributions and, and, and those types of issues. Clearly, that's, you know, both that and as we do the local coastal plan are going to be critical issues to protect the bay. I'm committed to protecting the bay and the harbor and, and for water purity.
Is there time about, hey? You have two minutes to fill us in on anything we didn't ask you about.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In, in Washington and in Sacramento and in countless city councils, I've sat in the audience and I've watched elected officials like yourselves cast votes. Some of those votes were easy, some of them were hard, some of them required courage in the face of the political calculus of the time. And at those times, I wondered what type of leader I would be if the opportunity ever arose for me to sit in the chair and cast a vote on behalf of my neighbors. Leaders, I've determined, have a responsibility to be willing to lead in the face of unpopular opinion, to exercise integrity in all their actions, to be willing to extort and educate the public while recognizing that all power comes from the people. In short, I believe it's responsibilities, I said before, for leaders to lead. I welcome the opportunity to serve my community through service on this council. Over my career, I've developed principles that I hope will serve me well, should I be honored with your appointment tonight. These principles include say what you mean and mean what you say, be true to your word, work in good faith, don't take policy disagreements seriously or personally, try to see the other guy's point of view. And in talking with you and some of your predecessors, it's clear that service on the city council provides a great feeling of personal satisfaction that comes from being able to help citizens and contribute to the improvement of our community. I believe I am prepared by education, experience and professional knowledge to put my talents to work in the service of our city. I've raised our daughter here in Newport Beach, located our business here, and I'm a proud member of our community. To the residents of the city and particularly the residents of District Seven, let me say that I will work hard every day to earn your trust. There is much to do, the general plan, the Newport Coast Community Center, City Hall and our local coastal plan. I look forward to submitting my record to the voters to earn their vote in November. I'm honored by your consideration and I pledge to give my best to our city. Thank you all very, very much.
Thank you very much, too. Hold on for just one second. We need to have you carry the name to the room for the next, next person.
The next applicant is Scott Piattar.
Scott Piattar.
Okay, thank you.
Welcome, Scott. Just to, to remind you, we'll give you a five-minute opening and then about 22 minutes of questions from us and a two-minute closing.
Sounds fair enough. This is, this is the next victim's seat, huh? I'm Mayor Webb, City Council. My name's Scott Piattar. I've been interested in this seat for some time. In fact, I actually pulled papers to run for the seat in November of '04 if Heffernan decided not to run. I was planning again to run in 2008 when Heffernan was turned out. It seems to have happened a little sooner than I expected here before you tonight because I believe that I can serve and represent District Seven. I believe that I can bring fresh ideas and a team attitude to the council. I believe that this district needs someone who can think outside the box while working together with the council, something that the former occupant of the seat maybe didn't do as well. A little personal background, I've been married for 25 years to my wife, Linda. I have three children, one that's through college and then one that's a sophomore and one that's a junior at CDM. Our family's been involved with Voyagers Church and Mariners Church before that. I've been assistant scoutmaster for six years. My son recently followed our family tradition and just achieved his rank of Eagle Scout. Professionally, professional background. I am a licensed architect. I own my own firm, which I started in 1992. We do project management entitlement, architecture. I was a planning commissioner from 1990 to 1998, where I served as chairman twice during my tenure. I believe the city is headed in the right direction. And I believe that as an architect and planning commissioner, that I can contribute towards that innovation and the innovation needed to deal with several of the difficult and important issues that are facing the city. Direction-changing issues such as allowing residential in the airport area or redeveloping and financing City Hall, the construction, the use of taxpayers' money. It's important using City, using City Hall as an example, that we are responsible with the taxpayers' money while still providing a civic center that'll serve this community for another 50 years. Our quality of life in Newport depends on the, a delicate balance between property owner's rights and the environment. And we, as homeowners and property owners, need, need and want to be able to expand our homes or businesses without a vote of the people. But we also want to be able to drive to work without having to spend additional time, unnecessary time, getting around the city. I believe that we can elect a council to make those choices and strike that balance. That's why I'm here. I consider myself pro-resident, pro-property rights, pro-business and pro-environment. You'll note that I used a lot less of my five minutes. And that's how I would also contribute to the city council, by not dragging the meetings on any longer than necessary. Try to be short and succinct and to the point. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Mr. Rosansky, would you like to start?
Hi, Scott. I'll ask you the same question I asked the other two candidates. What do you view are the duties of a city councilman?
I view the duties to serve and represent your district while representing the city at large and to make those day-to-day decisions that the city needs to make, to operate, to run as a government without having to go back to the voters to ask permission for everything that you do. So we're here to represent the voters and the citizens in their interest in running the government. And I believe the government should be probably as small as possible, small as practical, because by its nature, it tends to be inefficient.
Thank you. Mr. Selig?
Hi, Scott.
Hello.
What would you describe as your single strongest attribute that, if you were appointed to this council, that you would bring to the council and how would you apply it here?
Well, because one of the big issues is, of course, the new City Hall, I think being a licensed architect, being a planning commissioner, former planning commissioner, that I would be a real asset to the, to the council. I'd be able to jump into that, lend expertise and try and give good, strong direction towards completion of the project in a way, hopefully, that uses taxpayers' money as well and as well as provide for the community. It would be my goal to jump in and use that expertise.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
Scott, I think you were planning commissioner over in Irvine, right?
That's correct.
And I think you had a, what is your thought about how we should interface with Irvine on some of this huge development that's going along Jamboree and the traffic it'll probably cause us? And also development of our own that might be planned for the airport area?
I was actually on the planning commission when they did the zoning for the Irvine Business Complex. And that, at that time, we didn't allow any residential. So the new residential towers are, are since then. I think that the city needs to be very protective of its assets. And those assets are infrastructure and improvements. What we don't want to have happen is to have the city of Irvine allow development across our border that's going to impact within our border without them mitigating their impact. And you have to be vigilant in doing that, or else the city of Irvine will do it and let the impacts fall where they will and our citizens will suffer. So absolutely. On the other hand, we share a large border and I would expect that we would want to work with them as amicably as possible while protecting that interest. But I definitely would not let the city of Irvine, at their discretion, pushing whatever agenda they want to push, tell us what we're going to do.
How can you resist that effect that's pretty well happening? I mean, when both commercial and residential, for instance, down that corridor, how would, do you think, you're seemingly saying that we have some problems that that could cause? What would you, how would you attack that or what would your comment be there as a councilman?
I would frankly put an agreement together with the city of Irvine. And if they didn't want to negotiate or if we couldn't agree, I would take them to court over the CEQA. I mean, they have to, by state law, by the California Environmental Quality Act, mitigate their impacts. So I'd, I'd, you know, obviously, I'd want to work with them and be amicable and try and come up with a solution that, that allows us to develop our side of, as well as what they're doing. But if they didn't cooperate, I would go to court to protect the city's interest.
Ms. Webber-Dagel?
Yes, wanted to get your thoughts, Scott, on representative government, if, if you believe in that and kind of what your idea of how you'd go about doing that. And like yourself, I represent companies in the entitlement process. And, you know, over the years, you learn how to get a certain outcome. But representing 80,000 people, I found to be much more complex. And you deal with it really, a whole gamut of problems. You know, someone called the other day, their lid of their trash container was accidentally picked up by the trash truck, those types of things. So how would you go about fielding constituent calls and getting resolutions to people's issues?
Hire a great city manager and have him take care of all those problems, make sure they don't occur in the first place. But you're right, the representative government, you get those kinds of calls as well as the calls where, like you say, you're representing 80,000 people and you make a decision on whatever, whether it's the trash guy's contract or a development project. You're going to tick people off. Hopefully, it won't be a majority of them. So being sensitive to their concerns and hiring good staff to address those issues. And that's a very superficial answer, but that's obviously on the day-to-day, we depend on city staff to take care of those.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Thank you. Scott, actually, I get an opportunity to ask my original question. Been stealing my questions right and left here. Can you?
Does that mean we have to?
No, no, you guys have been asking good questions.
Next time, let him go first.
Let him go first.
We've got a short time, guys.
Okay, you got to add. What, can you define the three most important issues that this city has before right now? You don't have to go in priority, but just name, in your mind, what are the three most important issues confronting the citizens of this community and city council at this time?
Sure. Well, one of them, we've already gone over, and that's the new City Hall project. Where is it going to be built? How is it going to be paid for? What's it going to look like? I think one of the next things, which you've also been dealing with, is the general plan amendment, which will go to a vote of the people in November. And that's something that, again, and it goes back to Councilman Dagel's input there as far as representative government. I think that the intent there is for the citizens to elect us, to work out the details of a general plan and to have to go back again and again and again on various projects. If, if somebody's, you know, expansion on their home goes beyond the limit that's in their particular general plan boundary area, they have to go to a vote of the people to add 1,000 square foot to their home. That's not really very wise. So the general plan amendment, by establishing what I'll call a development budget and allowing the council to make decisions regarding projects that stay within the budget, seems an appropriate thing to do. So that and getting it passed is, is one of the priorities. And then the other things as far as the, the financing of City Hall and whether something like that needs to go to the people as well. Again, I, I believe in representative government. If people don't like the decisions that you or me, as, as a member of the body, make, then I would expect to hear about it when I'm at the ballot box the next time. I think that the detailed, day-to-day functions of government are best handled by the people that are familiar with the details and not slogans, which tend to happen in an election of our issues.
Good, thank you.
One of the things that we seem to have a shortage of in town are, are active parks. Do you have any thoughts on, with your planning experience, how we might be able to solve some of those, that particular problem?
Well, I presume you're talking mostly about lighted ball fields or ball fields.
Necessarily lighted.
And then some of those lighted. I mean, too diff, too difficult.
In mariners, I think.
I like parks. I want as many as I can and I want everybody to be able to play ball.
Okay.
You know, I, I am a strong advocate and those types of things bring the community together, bring neighborhoods together. So I'm a very strong proponent of city parks.
Tying into that, you have in your district, District Seven, which is the, has the community center, which we are working on trying to get out. How do you feel that you would work with that community up there in trying to get the project on the road?
Well, particularly as the, as the councilman from that district, I would take it as my responsibility to be the liaison between the city council and that district. And so I would want to participate in the community groups as they go through and finalize the design, finalize the financing, make up the shortfall in the financing and, and resolve issues regarding the pre-annexation agreement and other issues revolving around that. But again, I would look at the person that you're going to appoint tonight, that that would be one of the primary responsibilities since it's within their district.
Mr. Rosansky?
I'm going to deviate a little here because I asked a different question of the other candidates, but you'd mentioned earlier that you were an assistant scoutmaster?
Yes.
And I, too, am an assistant scoutmaster. And I, too, am an assistant scoutmaster. And one of the things that we tell the boys, or one of the lessons that we try and instill in them, is to lead by example. What example would you set that people would look to if you were a city councilman?
I think that the best example we could set would be one that would, be one where we would have a, I guess I could say, live up to the philosophy of our, of government. One of the things that I found when I was on the planning commission, everybody would, they had a project before, you wanted to, you know, take you out, grab a cup of coffee, you want to bend your ear regarding the particulars of their project. And obviously, you know, they're constituents, we want to address that and their issue. But because I have a very strong pro-property rights perspective, people found that I was consistent, I was predictable, I was trustworthy in that if I said something, I would follow through with it and live up to it. And I think those are the kind of characteristics that we could have, or use to set an example and be on the council.
Thank you.
Mr. Selig.
One of the things that we're faced with here in the city council, and that you were faced with, I believe, in being a planning commissioner in Irvine, is dealing with conflict that arrives when private property rights come up against the public interest. I was just curious, what kind of thought process did you go through as a planning commissioner, and what'd you go through as a city councilman in dealing with issues like that when they come before you?
Well, my philosophy would be that if there was a public interest that perhaps superseded the private property owner's rights, that it would be okay for the public to pursue its interest, but it needs to compensate the property owner. What, in a common, or a common occurrence, would be just the wrestling of conditions of approval. And oftentimes, I would battle my own staff, because they would put additional conditions of approval on it, because they thought that the developer or the property owner would pony up, that they would pay, and they could, they could get it or extract it from it, when in fact, there really wasn't a nexus that caused the need for this particular turn lane on a road, or traffic signal, or park, based on their development. The city needed it, the city needed it whether they did that development or not, but because there wasn't a need or a cause based on their project, it shouldn't be conditioned. If the city wants it from them, they should pay for it. And you shouldn't be negotiating based on what you can get out of a developer, or a property owner, or a homeowner. It should be more of what is the mitigation, or what are the causes that their development brings, and let's fix it, let's address those issues. So, I don't have a problem. If there's a public interest in something, having the public pay the property owner and exercise that interest. On the other hand, I don't expect them to extract something that doesn't belong to them.
Councilmember Nichols.
A question on the airport, and airport growth. We're looking at an expansion of the airport, and I just happened to come in there this night, and it's pretty crowded. It was hard getting out as well. It took about a half hour before we finally got the airplane up to the, headed the runway to take off. Our county is reaching a capacity here. Do you have any thoughts on, how would you handle that, and particularly from Newport's standpoint?
Well, I guess I'm glad I don't have to make those regional decisions. I think the airport working group's done a great job so far in maintaining and limiting the number of flights, limiting the number of hours of those flights. That, I think, protects Newport's interests. Trying to encourage quieter aircraft with that same number of flights also is a benefit. I think a lot of the delays that I understand that are at the airport are because of a shortage of gates, which the agreement with the airport working group seems to have resolved and allowed expansion of those gates. So, hopefully, that solves at least the ground snarls faced at the airport. The air snarls, hopefully, are limited as well. Beyond that, I would say that there's going to be a market demand, whether it's a tunnel out to March Air Force Base, or expansion of Ontario, or expansion of LAX, or all of the above, I think is yet to be determined. I know, though, that I don't want it at John Wayne.
Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, our community is surrounded on two sides by water, certainly a reason, one of the reasons that many of us live in Newport Beach. Any thoughts on the water quality and management in harbor, or any thoughts on the Back Bay?
Well, I'm familiar with some of the activities and agreements that IRWD has done with Newport, with the Back Bay. I would frankly like to see more of that type of work, what the IRWD did. I kind of pull my neighbor's leg a little bit. They built a swamp, and basically, they take the low-flow waters out of the San Diego Creek and run it through the swamp, and that cleans the water of a lot of the bacteria, the nitrates, and some of the other pollutants that go into the Back Bay. And I'd like to see more of that type of filtering system, so that we can stop things from coming into the bay in the first place.
Mr. Ridgeway.
Those are constructive wetlands.
Yes, a swamp.
Swamps. Talk to me about quality of life. You've touched on it. What's your definition of quality of life for our city of Newport Beach?
I think we've come to expect a certain standard of government, a certain standard of, in the environment, keeping it clean, a certain standard of the amount of traffic that we have to go through to drive around our city or through our city. And I think that maintaining those levels of infrastructure and service are what's going to keep Newport Beach and the standard, or the quality of life. I think the dangers that we have out there are, whether we like it or not, the county is getting more and more dense, excuse me, and they're going to be coming to the beach. So, we're going to have to deal with the growth within the county, even if it doesn't, even if we don't have any growth in the city of Newport Beach. And I think it's going to be one of those things that we're going to have to be creative, and perhaps we're going to have to be mean son of the guns and take people to court, in order to be able to mitigate those and to keep our city from gridlock, and yet still keep our commerce and tourism and other things vibrant. Because if it's, if it's gridlocked, you know, you'll lose tourism as well. So, there's a balance in there. And, you know, no one else is going to protect our interests except this council. So, we're the vigilant watchdog, so to speak.
We have two initiatives that are having petitions circulated, one on, let me call it Greenlight Two, which is, would cause voters to have to vote on certain-sized developments, and the other is having to do with certificates of participation being used in financing. Have you studied those initiatives all, and have any opinions one way or the other?
I know a little bit about them. I'll maybe respond more in general, maybe along the philosophies of representative government we talked about earlier. I believe that the general plan amendment, setting a quote zoning budget, and then allowing the council to make decisions within that budget, makes sense. The citizens will have had their input in the general plan amendment. To further restrict that, even to the point of the example that I gave earlier, where, you know, a homeowner might want to add onto his house, but his particular area, or general plan designated area, per Greenlight Two, is full already, because all of his other neighbors already added on to their homes, and he happened to be the last guy in, is wrong. To make that guy go to, go to a vote of the people in order to add a couple of bedrooms to his house, it goes against the principles of representative government, and it does not protect the citizens any better than they will under the general plan amendment. So, I am not in favor of trying to do ballot box planning, planning by slogan. It needs to be well fought out in a detailed manner, and deal with those specific issues. The participation notes, hey, if you're going to raise taxes to pay those off, I think I'd go to the voters. If you're going to pay for it under the existing general fund, and you just want to finance it that way, it's a financing tool. And if you're going to sit there and handcuff the council in limiting the ways that they can finance something, then again, you're limiting them, and you may not be getting the best deal for the citizens. They may, the council, we as a council may have to come up with a different way to finance it, to avoid the participation bond criteria, so that we don't have to go to a vote of the people. And it may be a more expensive way to finance it. The citizens will not be benefited by that. That's why you're elected, and if they don't like your choices, in two years or four years, they can vote you out.
Okay, thank you. We've had two rounds of questions. Now, is your chance to, you have two minutes, to tell us what we haven't asked, tell us anything you'd like to say that we haven't already brought out.
I think we ought to have a magic refrigerator in everybody's house. Super bowl joke, sorry. Thank you. As an architect, as a business owner, as a former planning commissioner, I feel like I'm equipped to come in and start serving with the council on difficult, difficult issues, starting tonight. If selected, I am prepared to run a campaign this November. I'd appreciate your support. I look forward to serving with all of you. And you should know that whoever you decide to appoint to this position, I will continue to be involved and help and serve the city and the community in whatever ways I can, even though you may appoint someone else at this time. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now, like you say, you have one more job. Levon is going to...
The next victim?
Yeah, she's drawing a name out ahead as we speak.
Dolores Otting.
Dolores.
Thank you, Homer, and I trust you that it is, queen.
Well, just as a reminder, you have five minutes to start, and then we'll go through roughly 20 to 22 minutes of questions, and then you have two minutes to sum up. So, you're on board.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and Mayor Protem, council members, TV viewers, and audience members. My name is Dolores Otting. I've been a resident of Newport Beach for the past 17 years, and love every minute of it. I'm a working member of the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee, EQAC, and currently serve as the vice chair. Newport Beach is the best place in the world to live, and it would be an honor and a privilege to serve as the councilperson for District Seven. It is because of my passion for the, for the community, and because nobody else stepped up to the plate, that I ran for office in the November 2004 election and received 17,108 votes. My opponent, former mayor and council member John Heffernan, the incumbent, received 20,233 votes and won by only 3,125 votes. As you are more aware than anyone else in the community, his letter of resignation to the council, he endorsed me as his choice to fill this seat. It is because of these 17,000 voters that I am hopeful that you will appoint me to be the next council member for District Seven. I have been attending council meetings for over a decade. Some of the members that I remember being at one of the first meetings that I ever participated in were Gene Watt, Evelyn Hart, Clarence Turner, Phil Sansone, who endorsed me for my 1996 campaign, my first time I ever ran for office, John Cox, Jan DeBae, and John Hedges. I also remember planning commission meetings, where now former mayor and council member Ridgway was a member of the planning commission. It is important for me to say that I feel that I am especially qualified for the position to represent District Seven, because I have been participating in our government for so very long, and I feel that I can hit the ground running. Besides city council meeting, I have attended GPUC meetings, G-PAC meetings, planning commission meetings, EDC meetings, Environmental Development Committee, Civil Service Board meetings, not a lot of people go to those, Newport Coast Advisory Committee meetings, Santa Ana Heights PAC meetings, as well as County Santa Ana Heights meetings, county annexation meetings, library meetings, and probably other meetings that I can't even remember, but I certainly have participated in a lot of meetings over the years. I have been an active member of the community, and as a result of my hard work and dedication, I have gained not only knowledge, which is invaluable, but also the trust and respect of many people in our city. And even have a column that comes out in the Daily Pilot every couple of weeks called "The Watchdog." About most importance to me is emergency preparedness, the containment of John Wayne Airport, our harbor and bay, fiscal conservatism, and public participation in being a voice of the residents. I aspire to bring the residents back into our government and make them feel welcome, and thank them for their interest in participation, no matter what view they may have. I firmly believe in property rights, and as a business person, understand the importance of businesses and the need to support them. We live in a city where you can paddle a canoe, pilot a luxury yacht or plane, drive a Maserati or a Vespa, ride a bicycle or a horse. Our city of Newport Beach is so great and unique, due to the diversity of our people and our ideas. Our diversity and our ferry is what will sail us into the next 100 years. Thank you, and I welcome your questions.
Sail us into the 100 years, okay. Mr. Rosansky.
Hi, Dolores.
Hi.
In your view, what are the duties of a city councilman?
Okay, the duties of a city councilman. I see the duties of a city councilman to be responsive.
Or woman, excuse me.
Or woman, council, oh yeah, councilperson. To be responsive, and I have to say, Mr. Council, I have to say, Mayor Protem Rosansky, that you are responsive. I have called you several times, and you always call me back. I think they're supposed to be knowledgeable. I think they're supposed to work with the community to make it the best place that we can live, and I think they have to dedicate their time, and probably times when they don't want to dedicate their time. And I admire all of you for all the time that you have put in.
Mr. Selig.
Hi, Dolores.
Hi, how are you?
Good. Dolores, you're obviously very passionate about Newport Beach, and I'd be interested in hearing what your, your vision is for the future of the city, so if you could project out 25 years or so.
Wow.
What would, what would Newport Beach be like?
Well, Newport Beach in 25 years. I read an interesting article online in the city of Ukiah the other day, and I think that one of the things that has to start to happen in the city of Newport Beach is we have to get people online, that we have to have growth, because there is going to be an increased population. Councilmember Ridgway knows these numbers because of SCAG, but, I mean, it's going to grow. So, there's something called smart growth out there, and I think that it's the city's duty and responsibility with some builders, which is what they did up in Ukiah, which is to start to educate the public. I know that part of the problem is, is that we have these meetings, and you really can't get people out, and so I think we have to start to, out to come to these meetings. So, it's time to start to think outside the box for some of these things. For example, we know that the mothers pick up their children in carpool lanes. We know that you have junior lifeguards, where hundreds of people sign up their children. So, I feel that in order to get a city that is the vision of everyone who lives here, we need to participate in it, everybody. And so, because of that, it's, it's time that you're going to have to start to think of ways to bring people, to take advantage of when people are out there, and to give them information so they can... Everyone here cares, everyone does have a passion. We have a very unique lifestyle with some of the nicest people. Of course, you all know that I spend a lot of my time at Gelson's, and I meet some of the nicest people there, and they truly do love where they live. So, in 25 years, I see growth. I see pedestrian walkovers. I see, I see what we have today. I probably see three lanes, or four lanes on Pacific Coast Highway. I hope I don't see any more raised medians. I have a real problem with raised medians, because I think it impacts emergency, you know, like emergency response. I've seen so many vehicles lately that have to go into Fashion Island because they can't get down Corona Del Mar, and I know that Councilmember Ridgway knows the name of the median that I'm talking about, so... I see it as a beautiful city. I still kind of see it quaint. I think people want that, and I see it built out, definitely, and built up. Yeah, that's what I see.
Thank you very much. Mr. Nichols?
I'd like your comments on libraries, particularly central versus the more isolated ones like Corona Del Mar, Mariners, or should they be associated with schools? Just what you're...
We have one on the peninsula, too. You can say that.
Yeah, I heard you had a little one down there.
Yeah, we do.
An old one, isn't it?
Yeah, very, sorry.
Libraries are extremely important. I think that neighborhood libraries, and I think that... I think that neighborhood libraries, and I think that, and I think that neighborhoods are very important, and I think with what's called smart growth, where you type, where you can establish a green space, a living space, a workspace, a library space, a shopping space, I think that satellite libraries will have a place in the future. I don't think we have enough space right now over at the central library to accommodate all the needs of all the children, so I feel libraries are extremely important. The Corona Del Mar Library, I don't, there was some talk that that might be closed down because they need to expand the fire station there, so I'm going to give you my thought on fire stations, since you asked me about the library next door. I believe that the fire stations that we build from now on, because we can't always afford to have two acres, and I really think that the fire stations need to be built up, and so if they have to be three levels, then they have to be three levels, and you have the trucks on the bottom, and then you have, you know, wherever they're going to live and wherever they're going to work out and cook. So, so anyway, that's, excuse me. So I do feel that libraries are very important to our community, and yes, they do belong in schools. When I moved out to California and was in Our Lady Queen of Angels and taught there for a year, I was surprised that they did not have a library, and that was in their school, and that was in 1990-91, because I used to have them in my elementary schools. Thank you for the question.
Councilwoman DeGel?
Yes, I spend a lot of time at Gelson's, too, but for different reasons.
Right, I know.
I'd like to talk about, you mentioned about everyone participating in government and your view of representative government, and I know that the amount of time that it takes to really just come up to speed with issues and try to come to reasoned decisions, you know, like last week I had a briefing in the harbor about all the environmental, economic, the regulatory, the policy issues surrounding that. You have constituents call you with pressing issues, you know, they'll ask for meetings and so on and so forth. You also have citizens with special projects, you know, trying to refurbish a pool. All of that takes time to learn all those issues, to interact with people, to be able to make decisions. What is your view of representative government? I mean, how would you go about representing people?
I would meet with them. I would talk to them on the telephone. I guess I would try to help them with their needs. I think sometimes, and what also happens, for example, there's a gentleman that when I went campaigning down in Councilmember Selich's area now, and I promised him that he would get a garage door somehow, and he still doesn't have a garage door, and so I talked with Councilmember Selich about it and said, "I want you to come down there with me so you can meet this gentleman." It's, I'm in a kitty corner, you know, like across from where the McDaniel's live, and everyone else has garage doors there. And so, see, part of my problem here is why do we have to help him get a garage door? If everyone has a garage door, then he should just be able to get a garage door, and his tools don't have to be stolen. So, well, it's true, they have been stolen twice, so I think sometimes we need to put in place methods that can accommodate people's needs so that we don't have to get involved in that level of detail for somebody. So things have to make sense. I think that you have to, I think in order to have representative government, you have to have common sense, and you just have to try to help people. I like to help people, and I like people, and I don't think it would be a problem for me to want to help anybody. I don't think so at all. Thank you.
Mr. Ridgway?
When you're helping all these people, when are you going to sleep?
Well, the same way you do it.
Yeah, but not very much, you know?
I mean, look who talks. You're out there all the time.
Yeah, thanks, Dolores.
It's true.
Give me the, in your mind, the three most important issues facing this city and the citizens and the council today.
Today?
Yeah.
The general plan update needs to get out there in bite-sized pieces. When I campaigned for office in 2004, from August until November, that was an issue that I brought up all the time, is you, when you eat an elephant, you can only eat it one bite at a time. We're running out of time, so somehow you now spent half a million dollars, which I'm happy that you did, to get information out to the public, and that's one of those things where you're going to have to get outside the box here a little bit, and you're going to have to reach the public so that they understand what they're voting on. And it would be my request to you that you try to get some things formulated immediately so you can start to get some information out to the people, because you don't want to overwhelm them. You want them to be able to read it, and you want them to be able to understand it. So that's the first issue. The second issue that I think is extremely important is emergency preparedness in a disaster warning system. The city of Dana Point recently, I think it was just last month in December, became not only tsunami-ready but storm-ready. Huntington Beach is storm-ready. I know that we're in process, but we need to get there. When I ran eight years ago, emergency preparedness was part of my platform. We didn't have anything like, I mean, like Katrina. We didn't have tsunamis. I just felt that it was important and that we had a plan. When I ran this time, this last time, that was my big thing, too, was emergency preparedness. I was at a planning commission meeting, and Commissioner Hen, when we had to evacuate the peninsula because of the tsunami, June 14th, he was very concerned about his daughter. She couldn't get out. Next time, he told her, "Use a bicycle, but maybe you're not supposed to be on a bicycle." People know, they need to know where to go and what to do, and we need to help them get there. That's, that is representative government. We're here for health and safety issues. We're sandwiched between an airport and the water, and many people are unaware of what to do, including myself. I'm being selfish here. I would like to learn, too, what is the best thing to do. Seal Beach has a wonderful program they implemented, I mean, like July, you know, like 28th, which is the mass calling system. Another thing that you could use to get people to participate in learning about the general plan or whatever you might want to do is get a mass calling system. Call 3,000 people at a time. Set something up in an area. Make it fun. Give away a $200 shopping spree to Neiman Marcus. I mean, you know, just, so, and the third thing, of course, is our harbor. Without our harbor, I mean, we have some of the highest property values in the country. We need to take care of our harbor and our bay. Water quality is extremely important. We are very lucky to have Mr. Kiff, who does a great job. We're lucky to have Dr. Skinner, Surf, you know, Surf Rider Foundation, and all of the nonprofits that help us. It is because of that that we have the reputation that we have throughout the world. We are the best city in the world to live in, and it would be an honor for me to serve this city.
Thank you.
Can't spend 200 bucks at Neiman Marcus, it won't go far.
I know. Well.
The, you've, I know you've been up and listened to a lot of the meetings up in the Newport Coast area. We have the community center, and there seems to still be a significant amount of controversy related to it. As a councilmember representing that group, what would you do to solve that problem?
Well, that problem isn't being, that problem isn't anywhere near solved right now. You still, you have an issue with the ball fields also in that area as well. You have an issue with the community center. I was at the meeting that night when you voted to do the community center, and city manager Blue Dow and Homer and Dave Kiff both told you, because I was at the meeting up in Newport Coast. Those meetings in Newport Coast happened at 5:30 in the afternoon, I think on a Monday. Now they're every other month. They used to be every month. Do you know how many people go to those meetings at 5:30 in the afternoon? Maybe three, maybe five? They don't have, I don't feel they have the right representative channel or vehicle right now. So all of a sudden, there was a meeting, and I know some of the people that are here in the audience with me tonight were also at that meeting. There was 150 people that showed up at night that wanted, now, I know I'm going to say something that you hate to hear, all right, but they wanted the right to vote on that. And you guys wanted to give them the right to vote on that. And it was Councilmember Heffernan's call. You let him make the call on that, and he said, "Oh, no," and Al Willinger came up, and I have all kinds of respect for Al, and, but I was on a plane going to Hawaii and heard about that, I mean, like the green space being taken away from a family, and they thought that it didn't happen, and I told them, "No, it has happened." So I would have to be fair and honest and represent what the city has done, and that is to build a community center. There will be no library because they ran out of money. That will have to be sold as a plus thing for them, and it is a plus, plus for them, but there is still some dissension up there. And like me, you're always going to have people that will complain, right? So can't take that away from the mix. But anyway, it's going to be a great place once it's done, but you still have some challenges up there. And I think they deserve, I think they deserve a better time slot, maybe? I don't know. 5:30 is not that great, so. I hope I answered your question.
I think so.
Okay.
Mr. Rosansky?
Hi, Dolores. You mentioned a couple of times you've been at Gelson's a lot, and so I imagine you do have familiarity with the Green Light Two Initiative and the COP Initiative that are circulating now and trying to qualify for the ballot. Can you give us your thoughts on those initiatives?
The Green Light Two Initiative, and it's called the DED Initiative, and they will give people the right to vote. As I said before, you need to get the general plan out there. Now, wouldn't it be like miraculous if you could actually have a meeting like they did in Ukiah where the Green Light people would meet, with the city people would meet with the G-PAC people? I mean, if you really had a community forum where Green Light was there with the general plan update, and you could actually discuss the nuances of what's happening so the people understand it. Like, that would be really some interesting public outreach. But what the Green Light Initiative will allow is for the people to have the right to vote. What the DED Initiative will allow is for people to have the right to vote on major improvements. What the whole idea, to be honest with you, behind the DED Initiative is, was, and still is in my mind, is that we all know that we need a fire station in Corona Del Mar, a fire station down on the peninsula, a fire station up in Crystal Cove, a new city hall, a new oasis, senior center. We know those things cost money, and as a result of which, the best thing to do at this point in time is to borrow, or however you want to fund, because now you have that finance committee that will help you with this, is go out and get 100 or 150 million dollars. These are not numbers that are unusual to people to hear when you haven't had any infrastructure in so long. So that way, you would vote on the 150 million dollars. You would put a capital improvement, a public improvement plan in front of the people, say this is what it is. We would all say, "Yes, we need it because we do," and then you would vote and do it. And there's no reason why you can't build a fire station in Corona Del Mar at the same time that you're building one down on the peninsula, because right now the cost of building is less money, and you could have more projects going on, because you get project managers for these and everything, so it's not something that isn't doable, and that, so that's how I feel about it. Thank you.
Councilwoman DeGel?
Any thoughts on Measure M or any of the other kinds of transportation funds and what projects you might want to see in Newport Beach?
What roads could we improve on? Could we add lanes to, I mean, to MacArthur? Is that what we're going to do one day with the money, because we're going to have to? Could we add lanes onto Pacific Coast Highway that we don't own, which is the Mariners Mile area, because we're going to have to do that also? So anything that will improve traffic, and again, emergency response for people, I would be in favor of, and I haven't done a study on that, so I don't know what areas are really impacted. I know Jamboree is tough. I know your area, you know, I mean, like in Bristol and MacArthur is tough up there, so. And another thing also with this is that we need to work more with our borders in Costa Mesa, because Costa Mesa also uses our hospital, and they have to get to the hospital, too. And if we allow them to build the same kind of building, or if we don't cooperate with them in such, in some fashion, I don't know what kind, so that they don't do what Irvine has done to us, you know, we need to look at that so they can get to the hospital, too.
Okay, we've run out of time for us asking questions, so you now have two minutes to tell us anything about yourself that we didn't ask you about that we should know about.
Okay, like you don't already know. Okay. All right. Okay. In closing, I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak. It is an honor and a privilege to be here before you this evening. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the 17,108 people who voted for me in November of 2004. They voted for me instead of the incumbent, John Heffernan. That's a big deal. They voted for me knowing that I did not have the endorsement of the fire department. I did not have the endorsement of the police department. I did not have the endorsement of the Daily Pilot. I did not have the endorsement of the Newport Harbor area of Chango. They voted for me because all through the years, they have learned that they can trust me to be their voice. It is because of their vote, as well as all the other people who recently took time, their time, to send letters of support and phone calls to you, the council, to the Daily Pilot, and to me. I'm here tonight because of them, and I want to really thank all of them from the bottom of my heart. I am a longtime resident of Newport Beach and a longtime voice of the residents. I have been asking questions on hundreds of items for over a decade, so on thousands of questions I have asked, and you have answered. With questions come answers and knowledge, and the basis upon which informed decisions can be made and then consensus can therefore be reached. My ideas and opinions may not be always the same as your ideas and opinions, but it is with, but it is with the diversity of thought and research that we can truly aspire to be the best for our residents in the city. If it were not for diversity, we would still be using IBM electric typewriters and not even dare to speak of new trends such as smart growth. It is because of my dedicated, hard work that I will be able to hit the ground running, which is very important, since there are many critical issues that need to be completed and brought to the public during the next nine months. I can bring continuity to the council. I want to thank you very much, and I will be running in November, and I will be setting up a committee, and I will be taking campaign contributions. Thank you.
Dolores, wait a minute. I would draw the last name out of the hat, but I think all you have to do is go and invite him by hand.
Common sense, I got it.
Dan Wampohl.
Welcome.
I don't know how you ended up being number five, but at any rate, just to refresh your memory, the way it starts out is you have five minutes to make an opening statement, then we will ask you questions kind of around robin up here for about 20, a little less than that, minutes, and then you'll have two minutes to sum up.
Great. I think most of you know me, but for the record, my name is Daniel Wampohl, and my family and I moved into the Newport Coast area in about July of 94. And shortly after that, I decided to start getting involved in my community by one, joining the board of my local association, or what we call a sub-association. A few years later, joined our master association, served on that as a board member for a few years, and the last four years, I've been its president. And as probably both of you know, prior to the annexation, I was muscled one day to join a committee called the Newport Coast Committee of 2000. In fact, it didn't even have a name at that particular time, which was the entity that represented the people of Newport Coast in negotiating the pre-annexation agreement. And I think we went through two city managers and two changes of council and a lot of years of dealing, but we negotiated a good win-win situation. I currently serve on the communications committee, although we don't seem to meet very often. And I sit on the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, which is, job is to see that the pre-annexation agreement is carried out. I'm an avid boater, so know quite a bit about the harbor. I have specialized my last 10, 12 years in issues having to do with Newport Coast, but I keep up on the issues, you know, of the city as well. Obviously, probably the biggest one right now is the new city hall, and I know that's an issue everybody is worried about.
Could you speak just a little bit louder? We're having a little difficulty.
Apologize.
There we go.
Is that better?
It's better.
Is there anything that I missed? Anyone's missed, want me to expand on?
No, I think we-
Okay.
Sorry to interrupt you, but I think the audience was having a hard time hearing you talk.
Okay, I'm sorry. With the current vacancy, I saw the opportunity to expand the work to the entire city. And as we all know, the 7th district, as far as landmass, is mostly made up of Newport Coast. So I would be bringing to the table an awful lot of experience of Newport Coast, and would look forward and be very eager-
Mr. Sellige, or Mr. Rosansky?
Hi, Dan. In your view, what are the duties of a city councilman?
A city council is there to.
A city councilman.
Oh, city councilman.
Sorry, I have a little frog in my throat tonight.
No, no problem. They're there to watch out for the issues of the city itself, to take the viewpoints of the people in their district, and to melt them together, and to carry them out on the council.
Mr. Sellige?
Yes. What singular quality do you possess that you think most qualifies you to be on this council, and how would you use it if you were selected to this position?
Number one, my commitment to serving the people in the city, which I think I've proved over a long period of time. My ability to listen to many viewpoints, and to keep an open mind, and to melt those together, and then carry them out in a win-win situation.
Councilmember Nichols?
Measure M is up probably for renewal. In fact, they're trying to put it through. We're not scheduled for much in the way of traffic improvements. What basic bottlenecks do you think that we should be looking to try and solve, and how would you, do you think Measure M funds would be applicable to for keeping the city moving?
Well, as you've pointed out, there are not many areas that this city has a large problem, except for, as we all know, the Miracle Mile. Controlling that, I've got to tell you, I haven't heard from any experts, you know, like, you may have been privileged to see if there is a solution. There certainly is not an obvious solution, except maybe going subterranean with another street. I think the city does a fair job of controlling its traffic signals, so it keeps things moving. I've even seen, over the years, the peninsula, the traffic go from a bottleneck situation to, most of the time, it's traveling fairly well. So, I guess to answer your question directly, Measure M funds, we need to hire some absolutely brilliant expert to come up with a way to handle that area through the Miracle Mile. And, you know, second would be Corona Del Mar on what I call cruising Sunday afternoon.
Councilmember DeGel?
Yes, I noticed your family in the audience. That's wonderful, they've come to support you.
Carolyn Spencer.
And I wanted to get your view on representative government. I know you've been up in Newport Coast on the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, and here at the city, really a wide array of issues, and you mentioned your knowledge of the harbor. And there at the harbor, we have different constituencies. We have boaters, we have businesses, we have homeowners. How would you go about representing those different interests?
Well, the issue of the boater and the issue of the homeowners are in direct conflict, and I think that those issues need to be addressed. I know one big issue right now is the party votes. And personally, I think that that is an issue that needs to be watched more. I think they are definitely violating the privacy of some of the residents, although, you know, there's a financial impact to those party votes, and that is also something to consider. And, you know, I'm sure it does bring a sizable amount of money to the city, but do we need that versus upsetting the quiet peace and enjoyment of the residents themselves? So, that would be an issue that I definitely would be looking very hard at.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Hi, Dan.
Whoop, let me try that. Hey, can you identify the three most important issues for the city of Newport Beach? That is, the city and the council. And I don't think those three most important issues are inclusive of Newport Coast. I think they're bigger, broader, so I want you to focus on the city at this point in time. So, could you identify what you see as the three most important issues?
Sure. First of all, I'd like to respond to the Newport Coast area. Currently, I don't think the Newport Coast has any big issues going on that requires a major effort of the council, not like other issues we have. I've mentioned that I think the most important one is the new City Hall, and the issues having to do with that. You know, the airport always continues to be an issue, and I think it will always be one forever and ever. And the third one would be water quality.
Okay. Thank you.
You mentioned that Newport Coast doesn't have any particular issues. However, we haven't totally resolved the community center, and perhaps the use of the parks adjacent to that. What are your thoughts as far as how we might move forward on that? Getting more consensus, let's put it that way, within the area.
Well, from my standpoint, I think it's a pretty easy thing. Pre-annexation agreement calls out for certain things to happen, and they should happen. And the community center should have already started construction. Personally, I see it as very simple. I think the most difficult issue is because the community center has dragged out so long, we now have a deficit of about one point eight million dollars, as you all know, even after subtracting the library, which really hurts my heart on that. I think it's something that's simple. And I mean, for me personally, who was intimately involved with all the negotiations, I don't care about any of the financial things that came out of the pre-annexation agreement. I care about that community center, because that's for children, and that's, will stay there after we all are gone.
Councilmember Rosansky?
Dan, there are two initiatives that are circulating around town right now for signatures to qualify for the ballot in November, the Green Light Two Initiative and the COP Financing Initiative. Are you familiar with those initiatives, and would you please give us your comments or thoughts on those?
Actually, I'm sorry to say that the Green Light Initiative is not one I'm familiar with at all. The COP Initiative, that's having to do with financing the City Hall?
Well, city financing in general, the initiative deals generally with using certificates of participation.
You know, I'm not gonna try to bluff my way through. I haven't, haven't not paid that much attention to it.
If I could ask one other follow-up question?
Please.
You, you did mention that you were, I think, president of your homeowners' association?
Yeah, Newport Ridge Homeowners.
And you're also on the NCAC?
That's correct.
Are you, what, are you planning on giving up those positions if you do become a city council member? Or not?
My first answer is no.
Thank you.
And if I may, sitting on the city council, I would have to sit on the Newport Coast Advisory Committee, so my hat would have to change.
Good. Councilmember Sellige?
I'm interested in what your goals would be as a city councilman, so if we can assume for the moment that you get appointed, and then you're getting off the council in eight years, four years, two years, six months, whatever, and you look back at your term on the council, what would you, what would you like to have seen accomplished during those, during that time?
New City Hall in Fashion Island. [laughing]. Is that not sticking my foot in my mouth?
[laughing]. Thank you.
I'd like to have the deuce, but.
Councilmember Nichols?
We've had some issues with our harbor, and I was wondering, have you any thoughts there? I, I'm particularly questioning, how would you work with the main harbor, the bottom part, to, what do you think needs renewed? What, do you think we have a peers issue, or, I mean, what, what's your thoughts on that?
We have a couple of issues with the harbor, and the first one I want to mention is who's patrolling the harbor. I think the time is past that the county is patrolling our harbor, and I really believe that the city of Newport Beach should. And that way, it has much more control of being responsive to the residents, because I really think that they are ignored. As far as physical things with the harbor itself, as you know, we're going to be dredging the harbor soon. I, I understand there's some issues with federal money on that. I don't know if that's been resolved or not, but we are supposed to start dredging the harbor soon. We have an issue of the different boatyards, and I don't know what we do with them, but neither one of the two main ones are set up right as far as land usage, or lack of land, and I think we need to make some changes there. The entrance to the harbor also has some challenges, the way some of the traps are set up, although I've spoken with Fish and Game, Fish and Games several times over the last four years, and it's getting better. But they used to allow the traps in such a way, you almost couldn't get in the harbor without running over them, and that's not good for the traps, and it's certainly.
You mean like lobster traps, or that kind of thing?
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with that.
Yeah, they're, they're out there during the appropriate times of year. But we, we have an issue with, you know, high waves coming into our harbor, which is unusual. I've never experienced another harbor that does that, and I haven't spoken with any experts about it, but I know we've shoved several boats into the jetty because, you know, the operator's not paying attention to it the way he should.
I'd like to just follow up a little bit. You spoke of dredging. Could you expand a little bit on that? I think we, think there's a problem there, but could you explain your understanding in the?
What dredging is?
No, not what it is.
Or why?
Yeah. What's your, what's your analysis of where we are today in the harbor, and, and where, what, what might we do to do something there?
Well, what we end up having is underwater little shoals, and you end up running into them with your boat, especially in low tide.
So, really, what you're advocating is general dredging of the whole harbor, right? Or would you be localized, or, that's what I'm really trying to get at, or a little more?
Well, I haven't been involved in any of the processes in figuring out where they need to be done. I mean, I know where I go, you know, with our boat, and there are at least two areas. Do you know where the, the city yard is?
Right.
Okay, that's where we keep our boat, or a tenant of the city. Coming out of there, going to the main channel, and going to the left towards the ferry, that is very, very shallow in there. I mean, low tide, it can be two and a half feet deep. There's not a whole lot of yachts that can handle that. And, you know, if we have a harbor, we have an obligation to have it be safe for the boaters, you know, or we shouldn't have it.
So, that, that, I'm just trying to get, that would be something you really are, think needs to get repaired, is one of them.
With the knowledge that I have, I would think that it's just certain areas, but I certainly have not seen a report of the entire harbor. I mean, I know why it gets that way.
Councilmember DeGel?
You mentioned that you are president of your HOA.
Yes.
Any interesting issues that came up, and how you went about resolving them while president?
Well, the reason I joined my HOA in the first place is it was set up as a maintenance association, and it has nine sub-associations underneath, and I disagreed with that completely. I have always seen it as a community association. And when I first got on the board, there was a president there that had been the first president, and is still the president, and he did not, he and I did not see eye to eye on too many things, and that was definitely one. And I finally got an evening, it was the first community event, it was movies in the park, and got the Irvine Company to pay for it. In fact, they paid for two and a half of them. Now, we have carnivals, we have multiple movies in the park, it's in our budget. It's kind of open, we, and anyone that shows up, we know in the movies of the park, they come from all over, but that's great, because it creates a sense of community, and that's what we're all about.
Councilmember Ridgeway?
Thank you. Dan, can you define what quality of life means for you in the city of Newport Beach?
Yes. In fact, my platform and the Newport Ridge Homeowners Association was, one, to increase the quality of family life, not meaning that it's bad, but to make it better. And the second one was to increase property values, and that's the direction I've always taken there. But quality of life is taking a look at issues, like traffic issues, like parks, entertainment in the area, to make sure the city stays in good financial standing so it can provide the services. I mean, I think we're the only full-service city in the entire county that I know of, and we owe that to the residents, to be looking at things that they're not paying attention to, that they just may want to use, like a park.
Thank you.
Many of your answers tonight have, have been tied into the Newport Coast area.
Yes.
If we were to appoint you, and you had to run, and would you run for election, next to a member, reelection?
I think it would be stupid to come up here and ask for a seat and not want to continue the work.
Okay, the, the next part then is, is what are some of the things that you might do to get yourself more well-known throughout the rest of the community?
Well, I think you do that by creating results, and it's what I did in Newport Coast, and it's what I would do in the city. When there's an issue I have to deal with, I probably spend the majority of my time doing research to make sure I understand that issue, and then talking to others, other leaders in the community, and as you know, there are very few people that will spend their time to work with you, so you have to seek those people out. They usually don't knock on your door. If they're knocking on your door, they want to throw spears. And, and that's the way I approach an issue, is do the homework. The answer will come.
Good. All right, I think every, all of us have finished our questions. Do you now have two minutes to sum up what we didn't ask you, I guess?
Well, I will say that there are five people that have asked you for one seat, and they are very, very, very qualified. I think what I bring to the table is proof of my grassroots involvement in the city, my ability to look at the issue, and my ability to negotiate a win-win situation. And on that, I am asking for your support to sit beside you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. I guess the next thing, could you walk out and bring the rest of them back in? Would you mind doing that for us, please?
Yeah, I think so. Because they're just going to repeat.
Isn't that a show?
No. Oh, God, no. But yeah, I'm pretty sure. I didn't ask you to write that. Second. That's what I've been told.
Thank you very much, all of you that have, all five of you that have participated in our process. We, all of you have qualifications that would allow you to be a council member. It's our tough task to do now is to sort through and make our determinations. But before we do that, we're going to ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment on candidates. And you will be, you will have three minutes to do that comment. The green light is on. When you get the yellow light on, that means you have one minute. And when you have the red light on, then that's it.
You should change your blue paperwork, then. It says five minutes for any agenda item, and this is an agenda item. Should be five minutes for a public comment for these, for this particular event. Good evening, Mayor Don.
Hold on for just a second. Pardon?
Are we getting a ruling from the chair? Good.
Okay. If it's printed five minutes, then it will be five minutes.
Thank you so much. Mayor Don Homer, always good to see you. And the rest of the council, who I, some of you know me. Those that don't are in for a treat. I don't come to city council very often, but when I do, usually I have something to say. This happens to be one of those occasions.
Have you told us what your name was yet?
My name is Ron Winship.
Okay.
Having run for city council more often than most people have gone to dinner in Newport Beach. At any rate, I'm here tonight for a couple of good reasons. And the first good reason is that they have, you know, we have a process here that's broken. And I can explain that to you by looking at the people that are sitting in the chairs up here. And, you know, when Gary Proctor, in his anomalous way, he lived in Santa Clara, and he worked down here as a city councilperson, and he had to be replaced. Mr. Rosansky came riding to the rescue. That was one. But then it got to be two, and then it got to be three, and then it got to be four. And you know what? No one, no one up here has said, "That's enough." No one has said, "We can change the city charter and vote and vote on these things." So what's happening here is in November, we're going to wind up with six people running for city council. It's going to be a mess. You're going to have a slate like you've never seen before. At any rate, what I'm saying to you here is very important. You're not getting the consent of the governed to do this. And as a result of that fact, this process is broken. What I hope will happen out of this whole mess, we can't fix it now until later, but I'll tell you what's going to happen in November. Anyone, anyone that runs for office in Newport Beach, that sits up there in those chairs and doesn't call for a change in the charter of this city, for a vote for the next person, should automatically be voted out. And I'm calling for that. So, you know, I'm always the guy that comes to you with the emperor's no clothes, okay? No one else will tell you this. Nobody else calls you and says, "God, you guys are really screwing the pooch here." Well, I'm sorry, I have to be the one to tell you. But this is an important, this is an important issue. Tonight, you have an opportunity to maybe get a modicum, one little modicum of reprieve from this. And the way you could do that would be to elect or to choose the right candidate for this job. There is only one candidate that's running tonight that you should choose, and that's Dolores Otting. Why would I say that? Well, Dolores has put her time and grade in. She's the best qualified. And everyone in this city, whether you know it or don't know it, or whether the fire department knows it, or the police department knows it, or who else knows it, the city chamber of commerce knows it, Dolores Otting will represent the people of Newport Beach with honor, with dignity, and with an ethical pride that she should all look to, to guide you the rest of your days on this dais. So I'm not here to beat you up. I'm here to actually applaud the efforts that you've all had to go through to get through this process. But I would, in good conscience, just mention this one last thing. Please change the charter. Fix this broken process. It's a joke. We have seven cities that I know of personally that think we're the biggest joke that ever lived. They may not call you and tell you that, but they're out there. And, you know, I mean, everybody's picking on Port Costa Mesa. Costa Mesa's doing a fine job compared to what's happening here. We need to set this system straight and right. You're not representing the people here. You're getting to choose your own little next guy, the next guy, the next guy. Mr. Rosansky, I think you wind up with, what, three years on one term and two more terms? That gives you 11 years in office when we have a two-year, two-term deal going on? And it goes on and on and on. Very unfair, not right. So I'll stop right now and maybe save a minute of my time for somebody else. But I want to thank you very much for what you're doing tonight. And please choose Dolores and make it happen. And you won't find me back here again. That's the only warning I can give you. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the council. Mayor Webb and members of the council. Tonight, I'm honored to speak on behalf of Dolores Otting.
Did you give us your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Tom Billings, Newport Beach, for the record. Why should you choose Dolores? Well, let me count the ways. She's the only candidate that could get 17,000 votes in the last election, just 3,000 shy of John Heffernan. None of these other candidates could ever, would ever be able to get that. Number two, only one endorsed by your very own, John Heffernan. Number three, only one that if election were held today, which you guys had the choice, thank you, Ron, I didn't have to speak about elections, but he was right on. If there was an election today, she would win hands down. The only one that is most in touch with city issues, that matter the most, and is most in touch with the residents. These other candidates, I'm sure they're passionate about city issues, but in terms of hitting the deck running, as she said, she's so up to speed compared to these others that, you know, it's no comparison. Only one that will spend the most time on these issues and reach out the most to residents. For example, one of your candidates has an impressive public finance background, but he's running a national company. I mean, how much time is he going to spend in comparison to Dolores on these kinds of I've worked closely with Ms. Otting on a variety of important city issues. She's a team player. And I know it's, you seven or six may think, hey, it's us versus Dolores, or it's us versus some of us residents on issues. And maybe that's true in some cases. But with Dolores, believe it or not, she can work with you guys and gals. Believe it or not, she really is a team player. She's not just on one side of the fence and won't, you know, consider the other. So I think that's something that I hope you really consider tonight, because she'd surprise you in that regard. She truly is a team player. We know, you know, as evidenced by these letters, which is a small portion of the people that would endorse her, that Dolores is the people's choice. Tonight, you guys are representing the people, guys and gals, excuse me. You are representing the people. So Dolores is the clear choice. It's not a tough choice, as, you know, I know Mayor Webb said this is a tough choice tonight. You know, based on all this evidence and support and her record and her attendance at meetings and her passion for the city, it's not a tough choice. And to not choose her tonight would be a huge mistake for each of you, because the people are watching. This is where the rubber meets the road. And I hope you choose Dolores Otting, because she's going to really make a difference for the council and for the city in a very positive way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm up here reiterating maybe what the other two gentlemen said in your choosing Dolores Otting. I've known that young lady for 17 years, as a competitor in business and as a friend, which sounds strange, but at all times, she never crossed the line when it came to business and friendship. We competed feverishly for our businesses because we were both in the same industry. I met her 17 years ago in the city of Mission Viejo. She was a little kid that was scared to death to get up and speak for her husband's rights. But she did get up and therefore stood shoulder to shoulder with me at supervisor meetings, at meetings for the industry in this city. She is so unbelievably dedicated to the public and the public's rights. If you don't choose her, there is a terrible injustice in this city, because she did run not only once, but twice. And Mr. Ridgeway made the comment, "When do you sleep?" I don't know when she sleeps, because she is a caregiver. She supports her husband in every way she can. She is at every public meeting she can be at. She is very knowledgeable and a very bright young lady. And I hope that you're going to do the right thing, because she got all those votes, and she did run twice. And I think the public genuinely wants her to be appointed to this position. If she doesn't get reelected, that's all in her own doing. But I think you ought to give her the right, because she is the most knowledgeable and one that has so much compassion that none of you could possibly imagine. As far as working with you, when she sits on this side, she's an adversary at times, but she will cooperate. I've seen her do it at meetings for our industry. And you need to think twice before you not vote for her. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Brenda Martin, and I want to thank you, Mayor Webb, and your honorable council for all your hard work and what you have to go through for this. I would also like to think that you're all secure enough in your goals for Newport Beach to believe that the fresh, passionate voice of Dolores Otting will enhance the productivity of this council. I would, I feel very strongly about her qualifications and what she will bring to this council. I hope you'll consider her. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Good evening, council. Wayne Zippy. And mine won't take three minutes or five minutes or whatever is available, just a couple of things. With Dolores, I think what you saw tonight, and I'd like to thank you for it, your consistency in asking the questions that you asked. You all maintained pretty much the same questions for each candidate, which made it very fair. And with that, you also have to acknowledge that Dolores was the only one that knew the answers, that knew the issues, that talked about the issues that are confronting the city today. She's been doing that for many, many years, as you've all seen and we've seen. She has been consistent in being here to learn these issues, to know what to do with the issues, to know how to work with you, and has maintained that for the entire time. Her work in our city, all the things that she talked about and the questions that you asked and the issues that brought up, she's the only one that can answer those questions and has done them in this city, not other cities. She's consistent here. All of her work has been done here. The other thing that is interesting is that it's been brought up a couple of times. The people have spoken before. When Dolores walked in and took 17,000-plus votes against an incumbent on the board here, the people spoke, and they spoke quite loudly with that. Dolores brought up herself that she did not have the police and fire backing and some of the other issues that were available at the time for other people, for the incumbent primarily. That's a real simple solution. The incumbent will always have the police and fire. I spent 30 years in the police department, so I know what I'm talking about. They're going to endorse the current boss, because if the current boss wins and they don't endorse him, you can imagine there's subramification. She was able to get 17,000 votes without their endorsements. I guarantee you that if she has to run again and runs in November, not only will she have the police and fire, she'll have the 17,000 votes she started out with, plus the support of the police and fire and the other organizations. She will sweep this with probably more votes than anybody else has ever had in a district. Dolores is probably the most knowledgeable, most qualified, and by far, the most dedicated person that you have to pick from. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and the council, I'm Mary Ann Zippy. And just like John Heffernan recommended that Dolores replace him, I also recommend that Dolores replace him. Dolores doesn't need to be told about the yellow warning light on the podium, because she's up here all the time, constantly using this podium to demonstrate her knowledge of the issues of this city. She hasn't talked to you in the last two weeks about the issues in the city. She's up here every single council meeting, talking to you about the issues in the city. She had won, she almost won the election, and as my husband said, against an incumbent, that's just incredible to get that many votes. Her credentials are for this city and not for some other similar city. Councilwoman Daigle mentioned a willingness to put in time. She's already a councilwoman putting that time. Dolores puts the time in, and she isn't even on the council. If she gets on the council, there'll be no end to the amount of time she puts in. She doesn't need a learning curve. She is certainly going to hit the ground running, but on the addition to that, she's the only one capable of all the candidates of hitting the ground running. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else would like to speak?
My name is Spencer Wampole, and I am the son of Dan Wampole. And I would just like to say that I'm very proud of my father, seeing him here today. And what I feel that wasn't able to really come out through your questions is my dad's like true ability to represent the people. And he really, being in the position of being his son, I've seen through the years how much he really cares about the people that live around him. Sometimes the attention is more directed toward them than myself, but hey, I can't be selfish. My father really loves this city and would do anything in his power to make it a better place for, and his whole goal is for future, for my children, for my grandchildren, for everyone else's. And I think that if you were to appoint him to this position, you would definitely see an improvement in the relations between the people that you represent. And yeah, I just hope you guys really understand how truly dedicated my father is to helping this city and the people that live in it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll try to keep this short. My name is Dr. Jennifer Fergie. I'm a member of Newport East for Responsible Government, and I have a PhD in political science from the University of Southern California. I've also taught state and local government and constitutional law in the state university system. My concern is that the charter provides that the city council has the option of either calling a special election or appointing a member to replace the, to replace a person who has resigned from the city council. My concern is that in this case, the city council has made a mockery of the option of calling a special election. The last four resignations the city council has considered replacing have been by appointment. And I'm presuming that tonight you will also appoint somebody. My concern is primarily that what you've done so far is you've created a self-perpetuating city council by continually appointing people and not calling a special election. city council by continually appointing people and not calling a special election, which is what you should do. It's what the constitutional right thing to do is to call a special election. I don't think they having three or four members of the city council who have originally obtained their seats by being appointed is what you would call representative democracy. Because it's making a total mockery of democracy. There is no legislative body, either the federal or the state level, whereby the members of that legislative body can appoint somebody to replace a seat that is held by an elected official who has resigned or even died in office. In the case of the state of California, the governor is the one who calls a special election. It's not the legislative body that even calls the special election. And I don't think that the charter is constitutional. I think it's unconstitutional for the city council to continually appoint members to fill seats of persons who have resigned. I can see that perhaps in an emergency, if you have somebody or perhaps maybe X number of the city councils have died in an accident or an earthquake or something, that may, emergency, may perhaps create a situation whereby the city council needs to appoint members. But I cannot see that in this case or in any of the three other cases, that you should have appointed people instead of calling a special election. So what I would say is please, please consider calling a special election instead of appointing another member to the city council.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak?
Mr. Mayor, city council, members of the public that are watching and that are here, I earnestly urge you—
Can you give us your name, please?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. My name's Larry Porter. I, with all my heart, I urge you, please, to appoint Dolores Otting to fill the vacant You all know that I'm fairly active in public affairs. And to me, she exemplifies what a public representative should be. I don't think I've really seen somebody else give more time than her to the betterment of her community and those around her. She is incredible. She would be so good for this city, and you guys know how well she can overturn the rocks and find all the details really that should be found for this city to move forward and to make good decisions. If there were a special election, she'd win it just hands down. There's no questions asked. So please appoint Dolores Otting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor Webb. Good evening, Mayor Webb and city council members. My name is Jan Van Der Sluit. I've lived in Newport Beach for twenty-five years. I'd like to add my voice to those who are calling for you to appoint Dolores Otting to fill John Heffernan's seat. I think that she has worked hard in her years here in Newport Beach. And so she deserves that seat because she's earned it the old-fashioned way. She's been here almost as many times as I've been here, more times than I've been here probably. But she has an active, open mind. She has an analytical mind. She knows the issues of the city. She has a common sense approach to solving the problems of the city. And I think that she can work with you when the upcoming general plan update occurs. And I think that she would help, help you make the right decisions. I think it's okay to have a little bit of diversity of opinion, I mean a philosophical diversity of opinion. I think in the past, because of the appointment process, we may see people that are very similar to each other. So you have somewhat of the same outlook on the city. And I think that we need to have a variety of opinion, the same kind of variety that John Heffernan brought to the table. So we're all not inbred into the system. So I think that we need this diversity. I think it's good for the city. I think Dolores Otting would be a great complement to you. And so I encourage you to appoint her. Again, she deserves this honor because she's earned it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else?
John Nelson, 110, Vialorca. Good evening, Mayor Webb, council members. Tonight, as you know, you've got a very important decision to make. And I hope you make the right decision. Once again, I feel compelled to speak out against the mindless forces of reaction. Running for council in a previous election and losing does not entitle that person to any special consideration when it comes to filling a vacancy. This in itself is not a basis for appointing an individual to a position on council. There is no precedent for filling a vacancy this way. The council has never appointed someone to fill an open seat simply because they were the losing candidate in a prior election, let alone twice. Furthermore, it would be imprudent for the council to appoint a person whose views have been presented to the voters and rejected by a majority of the electorate. Likewise, appointing a losing candidate to the office which they have previously campaigned for and lost would be a usurp upon the majority. It would also be an injustice to the people and the applicants themselves to impose a defeated candidate on the people by appointing that person over a more qualified and capable individual seeking office. And it would be a mistake for council to appoint an applicant who fosters a false notion that city council is a cabal that engages in machinations to the detriment of its own citizens. Or an individual who panders to the imagined fears of a vocal minority, or someone who betrays themselves by the fury of their passions. To do so would be no less folly than excursion to the moon on a cart drawn by geese. I urge this council to consider all capable candidates and not be predisposed to selecting an applicant simply on the basis that that individual, having been defeated in a prior election. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing no one running down here, I will close the public comments. Are there council members that would like to make comments before we vote? Councilmember Selig?
Yeah, I'd just like to compliment all the applicants. I think we've got a slate of very well-qualified people. The city is very lucky to have such a list to choose from. And I'd also like to thank you for putting yourself out and coming down here. I think it's a very, because I've gone through it myself, I know that it's a very personal process. You really put yourselves on the line to get up there. And it's almost like standing up on the podium without clothes on and having to face the council. It's a very personal process. My hat's off to all of you for applying, and I thank you for doing so.
Thank you, Mr. Selig. Mr. Ridgeway?
I just felt compelled to answer to one of the speakers that we have had our Section 403 of our charter reviewed by city attorney and ourselves on every single occasion. And it is not discretionary, as was suggested. It does not give us the option. It basically says, "Within thirty days, we shall appoint." And if we cannot appoint, for whatever reason, we don't, it's a six-man council, so there is not a lopsided. It actually ends up being a supermajority. Then, and only then, does it go to an election. So it, I want the citizens in the audience, that is, the TV audience, certainly to understand that we've reviewed this over and over again, and that's the way it reads. So it is not an option.
Is there anybody else that has any comments? All right, city clerk. We will now begin the voting.
I have a question. Is this, this is the first closed ballot we've had like this, right? I mean, every time before, you've announced who voted for what candidate.
The city clerk reads them off.
The city clerk will read them off.
Go read them. Your name was at the bottom.
Oh, I didn't understand it. Excuse me.
This will be an open ballot.
Well, I mean, we've had them before. I just was wondering if we were changing the rules in that regard.
Same, same rules. City clerk?
Councilmember Nichols voting for Dolores Otting. Councilmember Daigle, Keith Curry. Councilmember Selig, Keith Curry. Mayor Protem Rosansky, Keith Curry. And Councilmember Ridgeway, Keith Curry. And Mayor Webb, Keith Curry. Keith Curry is the new council member for District Seven.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Curry, if you would join me at the podium, we will swear you in.
And the seat after me. I, Keith D. Curry, do solemnly affirm—
I, Keith D. Curry, do solemnly affirm—
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States—
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States—
And the Constitution of the state of California—
And the Constitution of the state of California—
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic—
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic—
That I will bear true faith and allegiance—
That I will bear true faith and allegiance—
To the Constitution of the United States—
To the Constitution of the United States—
And the Constitution of the state of California—
And the Constitution of the state of California—
That I take this obligation freely—
That I take this obligation freely—
Without any mental reservation—
Without any mental reservation—
Or purpose of evasion—
Or purpose of evasion—
And that I will well and faithfully discharge—
And that I will well and faithfully discharge—
The duties upon which I am about to enter—
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations, Mr. Curry. Before you take your seat up here, is there any words that you would like to say from the podium?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, first of all, I want to thank all of you for the time that you have spent, for the dedication that you have put through this process, and for the confidence that you have expressed in me tonight. I look forward to demonstrating that I am worthy of your confidence and in joining you and tackling the many tough decisions facing our city. To the voters of Newport Beach, and particularly the neighbors and friends of mine, residents of the Seventh District, I want to pledge to you my commitment to representing our community fully and faithfully and fairly on this council in the course of the decisions that are going to come before us, to see that the interests of the Seventh District are represented well and faithfully. Let me say to the other people who sought this office, and we sit together in a room for two and a half hours, you actually learned a lot about each other and a lot about the city and a lot about people, that they were all excellent candidates. I hope them to become good friends, and I look forward to their advice in council during my time on the council. I look forward to standing for election and putting my record out there so that people have an opportunity to vote on it. And I know that there are many people here who supported other candidates. I ask them to give me the opportunity to show them that I can lead and that I will lead fully and faithfully and fairly, and listen to all opinions, whether they were supportive of me or not in tonight's campaign. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. One little bit of interest before you take your seat up here. Is there anybody up here that wants to change places? If, since that's, it doesn't appear that anybody is, so you inherit the seat down there.
You get to run the light switches.
The next item on the agenda would be general public comments.
Mayor Webb, members of the council, I'm Mark Seitz from Babo Island. A couple of comments. First, great questions. I learned a lot tonight. Second, I was very heartened by the interest taken in the harbor that you demonstrated by your questions, which leads me to my written presentation. I have one of the two dredging companies in the harbor, and I've been serving this community now for twenty-four years. For those of you who might not know exactly what I do, dredging is one of the essential services necessary to keep a harbor operating. Specifically, I dredge under docks to deepen the boat slips and to keep the docks themselves from breaking up should they go aground on the sand at low tide. The sand from these projects is used to replenish the bay beaches that are scarred by natural erosion. In fact, almost all the beaches you see as you travel within the harbor have been created by maintenance dredging at one time or another. As I'm sure you know, the city's federal and state permit to form this routine dredging, known as RGP 54, expired over six months ago, and the city staff members are working to renew it. Also, many waterfront residents who wish to dredge under the old permit and in the process provide sand for public beaches could not do so because of the presence of eel grass, which is flourishing throughout the harbor. As you might imagine, these permit lapses and eel grass restrictions are not only hard on the waterfront property owners, but also hard on the contractors who wish to provide these services to the harbor. This is the fourth permit lapse since I have started serving this harbor in 1982. The last lapse, beginning in 1999, lasted for over one year. In addition, even when we do have a permit to dredge, the restriction on dredging near eel grass excludes approximately one-third of the jobs that need to be done. At the last Harbor Commission meeting, the Harbor Resources Department presented a staff update which included a section that read, quote, "In response to requests from a city councilman, Harbor Resources is investigating possible options for supplementing dredging under the regional general permit, including: city purchase of equipment, additional contractors to work in the area, contracting with other governmental agencies that have equipment," end quote. It sounds to me from the staff report that at least one member of the council is not satisfied with the services provided by the current dredging contractors. From my perspective, the city could buy several dredges or entice a dozen contractors to come to the harbor, and the same amount of dredging would take place, which is currently none. Because, as I've already mentioned, the city has no dredging permit, even when they do get the permit, work will be severely limited by the proliferation of eel grass and the lack of a workable plan to deal with it. I fail to see how more dredges or more contractors will overcome what is clearly administrative and regulatory issues. If the city should decide to follow one or more of these courses, could you please do me the courtesy of giving me as much notice as possible? I believe that it would be very difficult for the existing contractors to compete with a government subsidized operation, and the prudent course would be for me to direct my energies elsewhere. The same is true if the city should choose to invite outside contractors in to compete for a very limited number of dredging jobs. I believe, at the end of the day, the city would wind up with one or two contractors, which, because of all the permits and restrictions, is all the potential workload could support. If there are any specific concerns you have, or perhaps you'd like to discuss purchasing my equipment, please give me a call. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to make a public comment at this time? And the next item on the agenda is a chairman, but we need to put on the next agenda the selection of a new chairman for the Finance Committee for the City Hall side?
Well, I think maybe a reshuffling. Certainly, I think Mr. Curry should remain on that committee, so perhaps somebody dropping off and, but we should agendize for sure.
We need to agendize the item of appointing a chairman because he was the chairman and the council selected the chairman the last time through. So we need to definitely have that on the agenda. And then, if you want to put on the agenda also, the reconsideration of the council member appointees, put that up here.
Well, I think you have to. I think it'd be a disservice to the citizens of this community to not have Mr. Curry on that committee.
that committee.
We're not going to discuss the merits one way or the other, but I think we will have the opportunity on that with the-
Well, I'm, I'm making that comment in relationship to the appointment of, of council members.
City clerk, do we need to agendize that discussion if we want to have that discussion to change the makeup of the council members on that committee? I mean, as it is now, don't we have to agendize adding the third member? Do we ever resolve that?
I believe that that's on the next agenda. You, you never formally adopted the resolutions establishing the committee, so I believe the city manager is bringing that back on the next agenda. It was done by minute action prior to the appointment of the, of the members. And also, I just wanted to bring up that-
Are you referring to the council members or the committees themselves?
The committee itself.
So you're saying the committees are not legitimate at this point?
Well, I'm not saying they're not legitimate. Typically, the committees are established by resolution. These committees have not been established by resolution, and I believe that's what the city manager is bringing-
So the whole issue's going to come back to us, anyway?
Sure, yes.
And the appointments that were made will have to be remade, as you know?
No. No, it was done by, this will just formalize the action that you took prior. It was done by minute action. But I also wanted to bring up that subsequent to the appointments being made, Mr. Don Dallas has declined to accept his appointment, so there's, with the addition of Mr. Curry's position, there are two vacancies on that committee right now.
But, but the minute order was a minimum of seven up to 11, not that there had to be 11?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anyway, put that on the agenda.
We will.
Is there anything else before we adjourn?
Make it so, number one.
We're adjourned.